We'll go ahead and get our city commission started. If I can get a roll call and a call to order, please.
Mayor Shirley.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
All those that are able, if we could all rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have an award and proclamation.
Item 3.1, the day of January 20th, 2014, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. commemoration day in the City of Salina, Lennon Johnston will read the proclamation. Thank you.
Jones already got one.
I'll be reading the proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on 2014. Whereas the 20th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dartmouth Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion in human dignity, and example of love and brotherhood, and whereas the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the goods of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetrate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals. Whereas the citizens of Salina remember this past year allowed us to celebrate this monumental passing of the Civil Rights Act of 1963, we must continue to act on the legacy of Dr. King to ensure that the civil rights of all individuals. Now therefore, I Barb Shirley, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 20th, 2014, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great litter of humankind. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of City Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 6th, 2014. This is written by Barb Shirley, Mayor of the City of Salina.
Do you have any activities or plans for next week?
Yes, ma'am, I do. On Friday, January 7th, they have an open mic night and poetry series at 7:30 PM at Ashtra Books and Coffee House on 141 North Santa Fe. You must be 16 or older to attend. If you are under 16, an adult must accompany you. $5 admission. Saturday, January 18th, there is a literacy program with the Volunteer Connection at Central Mall to 2059 Street, I mean, South 9th Street, 20, I mean, blah, wow, sorry, 10 AM through 5 PM, featuring presentations by local writers and writing group. The community potluck dinner would be at 6:30 PM at the Salvation Army on 1137 North Santa Fe. Everyone is invited, please bring a dish to share. The celebration choir rehearsal scheduled would be on Saturday, the 4th, at 6:00 PM on New Jerusalem. Monday is the 6th through the 13th, at 6:00 PM on New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church. New Jerusalem would be at 321 North 8th Street. Saturday, the 18th, following the potluck dinner at Salvation Army, and Sunday, the 19th, at 2:00 PM prior to the celebration at the Salvation Army. The Sunday, January 19th, the Martin Luther King Jr. Day Celebration would be held at 3:30 PM at the Salvation Army on 1137 North Santa Fe. And on Monday, January 20th, there would be a service honoring Martin Luther King Jr. Noon, at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, 215 South Chicago.
Sounds great, thank you. I have your signed proclamation, if you want to come and get that.
Okay, at this point, we do have our citizens forums, if anyone would like to come up and approach the commission for anything that's not on today's agenda, now would be your time to do so.
I'm Cheryl Musfeldt, at 1035 Merrily Circle, here in Salina. Do you know what's in your drinking water? Sodium fluoresilicate. Do you know where it's coming from? Kansas City Industries, or KC Industries imports sodium fluoresilicate from China. We found the document that shows sodium fluoresilicate, the fluoride that we put in our tap water, is coming from the factories in China. How reliable do you think the quality control is in China? Do you know what is in sodium fluoresilicate? How much arsenic is in this sodium fluoresilicate? We don't know either, because I've never received a chemical analysis, and I hear, apparently they sent it today, from Martha Tasker. Without an analysis, you don't know what you're drinking, and why do, and I'd also like to know why the certification documents on the salinakansas.org appear to have been altered. Do you know what the level of sodium in your drinking water is? 210 milligrams per liter. Do you know what the recommended level for the sodium in your water is? 100 milligrams per liter. Who does this affect? All those with high blood pressure and heart disease. What is the recommended fluoride level for Kansas since January 7, 2011? 0.7 milligrams per liter. Why are we still at 1 point per million? Cancer.org states there's evidence of cancer causing potential from fluoridated water. It also states that the fluoride tends to collect in parts of the bones where they are growing. Do you still think it's safe to be fluoridating in water for the children? How is this beneficial to our loved ones if there's a cancer risk? Where are the studies that take all the chemicals that Salina adds to the tap water and prove they are not harmful after being mixed altogether and then drank? Can you show me the scientific evidence that proves that sodium fluoresilicate can cause no harm? I have a letter from the EPA back in 2000 that states, "We are unable to find any information on the effect of silicofluorides on the health or behavior." How do you know it's safe? I want science, not endorsements. Reduced waste, 99.9% of the fluoridation chemicals goes down the drain. You had an article in Saturday's paper about saving money and stopping waste. What a way to do it, by stopping fluoridation. Save on pipe repairs from the corrosion it causes. Pump replacements that you just currently spent close to $16,000 for, and for the $15,000 that you spend on chemicals, that's a $30,000 saving right there. Trendy now are cities that are rejecting fluoridation. Six cities in Kansas and the largest one have rejected it. We need to join the 98% that don't fluoridate. Humans are not filters for toxic waste. Humans don't have a fluoride deficiency. Tooth decay does not result from a lack of fluoride. It's poor oral hygiene and poor nutrition. It's as simple as 1, 2, 3. It's outdated, it's unnecessary, and it's harmful to all. Vote to end fluoridation forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
My name is Warren Huff. My grandfather came from Sullivan, my father was born in Asbury, and so was I, 721 Highland. Did you know that 98% of Europe has kicked fluoride out of the water, except for southern Ireland? Southern Ireland has the highest rate of cancer and diabetes of all of Europe. My father's leg was just cut off right here, after drinking the water all his life here, his foot turned black. I came to find out that other cities, countries, have had this powder analyzed.
Mr. Huff, for those at home, excuse me, Mr. Huff, for those at home, they can't hear you unless you're talking into the mics, someone turn around.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, that we are, viewers can hear you too.
I was trying to speak to everybody, oh, thank you, because it's so important, it's on the record. Now, I propose that we get this chemically analyzed, I've redone the research, it doesn't matter if it came from China, or I called the company today, Kansas City Industries, and it says on the bag it's manufactured in the United States. Well, they told me that's not true, it's manufactured from all over the world, and they bring it in. Then I asked, I went down to the water company, and I asked them how they put it in, it comes in pallets, in a powder form, they have to have a hazmat suit on, and they pour it into their holding tanks, and I said, "What do you do with the bags?" "Oh, we just throw them in the trash can." So I'd like to get one of those bags, I'd like to get a sample of the material. We're going to have it analyzed to find out what's in it. If we find out that there's anything toxic, poisonous, then we will make a case, after we find a scientific, peer-reviewed literature that says that mercury, lead, cadmium causes diabetes, then we will start with the person who actually, closest to the injury, who's actually put it in the water, and work up the chain of command. We don't have to trust anybody. All we have to do is find out what's in it, find out how it affects you, and go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Warren.
I'm Ron Musfeldt, 1035 Merrily Circle. I'm talking about the effects of fluoride on the central nervous system, okay? Fluoride can be, fluoride could be toxic by ingestion, if 1 part per million, and the effects are not immediate, it can take up to 20 years or more before they become evident. The prolonged ingestion of fluoride can cause significant damage to health, and particularly the nervous system, and the information I got was from .gov, PubMed, and it was in 2011, so, thank you very much, please stop fluoridation.
Thanks, Ron.
Dennis Benoit, 1773 20th Road, outside the town of Conoplas, in Ellsworth County. I was born here. And I'll speak, because I'm sure a lot of this you've already heard before, so I'm going to speak to the 99.99% of the citizens out there in Salina, and I hope they utilize this. I'll deal basically with this water quality sheet. My first time here before the city commission was in February of 2011, and I objected to a couple things on it. It's a standard generic form that most the other cities use that are fluoridated, and on the 28th of February, 2011, I came in here and I read, "The bottom line is that the water provided to you is safe." It's right here in bold lettering. Well, I'll tell you right now, no, it's not safe for babies or infants. Matter of fact, if I would have known back then, I could have said, well, for today, it's been 46 years, and it's not safe. Not safe. In 2006, the American Dental Association recommended to parents, "Do not mix baby formula with Salina water." But I don't think I've seen it in the newspaper, or I haven't heard it on the radio, and I don't think I've seen it, it should be listed someplace. I haven't checked with the Health Department, but I think we will be checking with the Health Department to see exactly what they say. And then, as far as, we know what it is now, but in 2011, the reason I came to this room to speak to the city commissioners, to present this, talk about this, Bulletin 50, 53, from the CDC, about dental fluorosis. Dental fluorosis, it's an indicator, I think on page 5, it'll give you the definition, but it took me six months to finally know what it was, but it's, dental fluorosis is the first stages of fluoride poisoning. Well, that's why they name it dental fluorosis, just like, and then skeletal fluorosis is even worse. So I tried to bring this information here and give it to the commissioners, and I will, you know, they thanked me, and, so, you've heard this information before, I'm just giving it to these people out here now, because according to this, 12- to 15-year-olds had a rate of about, most of it in the mild area, of over 40% dental fluorosis. Now, I talked to Marsha Tasker after the thing, and said, yep, they were thinking about lowering it, but, you know, and then they finally did lower it. So that optimum level that they used to have, and I'd like to know for how many years they had that optimum level, that we now know was too high, too much, too much fluoride, especially for babies and infants. So please, consider this stuff. You are public servants, elected public servants, and the citizens are at the top of the chain. You serve them, and so you're supposed to be taking care of, looking out for their welfare. And if you deny this information, if it's not readily found, or put on the water quality sheet to notify the people that there is some harmful effects to the fluoride that you are responsible for putting into the water, well, the people will be able to judge for themselves. But, and the other thing was, on the other side, fluoride, it's a naturally occurring and a water additive to promote strong teeth, why don't they say prevents cavities? Because maybe they can't prove that it prevents cavities. But we know 30% to 50% of that sodium fluoride that we've been putting in the water from China, and I apologize, for over two years, I've been saying it comes from our fertilizer industry in Florida. Well, I'm sorry, I was wrong, but now we know.
Dennis, and keep in time in mind, since we do have a full house, I'm trying to have everyone with five minutes.
That's all, that's all I have to say, but please consider, public servants, put this information on here. If you are responsible, you need to put it on here, so the people out there can decide for themselves, because you never gave them an opportunity to vote on it. And you don't have a dose, all you have is a concentration that we know for how many years it was too high. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis.
John Perez, 2262 Sherwood Lane, Salina. I've lived in Salina all my life, I've been drinking Salina water my entire life.
And nice-looking teeth.
Well, thank you very much. But I'd like to ask every one of you, is to please consider removing water fluoridation from our, we want fluoridation to stop in the City of Salina, please. We're asking you to please consider that. What I'd like to also tell you is that, as far as freedom of choice, I think that it's being infringed upon, not intentionally, but I do believe that it is being infringed upon. We'd like to think that when we purchase a home in Salina, that we can drink the drinking water that's supplied to us by the city, and not worry about it being contaminated with any types of toxins. And it is my belief that fluoride is a toxin, and, well, I'm going to go a step further. I don't believe that it is a belief, it's not a belief, it's a fact, that fluoride is a toxin, okay? And we also receive other toxins, along with the fluoridation of Salina water, and I won't go into the details of that, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that if you stop Salina fluoridation, it will make this Salina Cares Group very happy. The reason we're doing this, and if you think about it, why is Salina Cares Stop Fluoridation Group so adamant? I mean, we have families, we like to have the opportunity to go and play golf, those types of things, but we devote a lot of our time to the things that really matter, and this really matters to us, and that's why this group is so adamant. But, again, one time, when I suggested that we ask that the water fluoridation stop, that the response would be, your freedom of choice isn't being infringed upon, you do have the choice not to drink the water. Well, I hope, I hope that that's not the thoughts of the city commission, okay? Because the people in Salina want to think that you're looking out for our best interest. And also, whether it's good or bad, we wouldn't, we don't want to be medicated without our consent, and fluoridation is a type of medication. So please, please consider rescinding water fluoridation in the City of Salina.
Thank you, John.
My name is Mary Pericati, I live at 1606 East Republic Avenue, here in town, and I have a statement from the 1992 of August Journal of American Medical Association, 1992, by A.C. Danielson, and it states, "A scientific study reveals that fluorides in the water supply of 1 part per million is associated with an increase in the hip fracture rate of women, and that fluoride accumulates with the age and may reach toxic levels in a person's lifetime. I don't think we women, our bodies have changed in 2,000 years, and if this in 1992 was correct, that it increases hip fracture, I believe it's happening in 2014. And so I wish that the city commission would put it to vote, and allow us to remove fluoride from our water, and so I thank you."
Thank you. Debbie Grosser, 1373 Eagle Crest, in Salina. We used to think asbestos was safe, we used to think lead in gasoline and paint was safe. Heroin, cocaine, and opium used to be legal drugs. They used to put heroin in cough syrup. Coca-Cola used to contain cocaine, as well as medicines, promoted as a wonder drug. Today, we know of it as an incredibly addictive party drug that messes with your brain chemicals and your heart. In India, there was a widespread belief that tobacco was good for teeth, resulting in tobacco toothpaste. Now, there is a ban against tobacco and toothpaste. During the 40s and 50s, 40,000 lobotomies were performed to cure mental illness. Bloodletting used to be a medical procedure. Mercury used to be used as a treatment for syphilis. They used to x-ray feet to determine shoe size, that resulted in cancer of the feet for many people. Doctors used to prescribe DES, which is diethylstalbesterol, which caused uterine cancer in women and was passed down the bloodline. Thalidomide was given to pregnant women, resulting in birth defects. Doctors used to be in cigarette commercials promoting smoking. Each brand claimed they were healthier than the others. Then 50 years ago, the Surgeon General Luther Terry advised cigarettes caused illness and death. It's a better situation now, but we shouldn't have to walk through the smoke, because smokers are allowed to smoke 10 feet from the front door. After conducting the largest U.S. fluoridation study in history, Dean Burke, Ph.D., chief of the National Cancer Institute concluded, "Fluoride causes more cancer, and it causes it faster than any other chemical. Fluoride is further linked to osteoporosis, hip fracture, memory, and neurological impairment and kidney disorders. The National Research Council states fluoride is not an essential nutrient. No disease, not even tooth decay, is caused by a fluoride deficiency. Not a single biological process has been shown to require fluoride. Evidence shows fluoride interferes with many important biological processes. While the FDA approved some of the other drugs I mentioned, it calls fluoride an unapproved drug. There are many instances over the years where doctors and dentists have been wrong. We have better science now, do your own research. Scientists knew back in the 1930s that fluoride was unsafe and why, but this information was suppressed for commercial gain. Fluoride is still unsafe and shouldn't be in our water." Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
John Boson, 1373 Eagle Crest, in Salina. Groundwater is the major source of water in most parts of the world. Presence of low or high concentration of certain ions is a major issue, as they make the groundwater unsuitable. Fluoride is one such ion that causes health problems in people living in more than 25 nations around the world. Fluoride is present in low or high concentrations in groundwater because of natural or anthropogenic causes, or a combination of both. Natural sources are associated to the geological conditions of an area, several rocks have fluoride-bearing minerals. The weathering of these rocks and infiltration of rainfall through it increases fluoride concentration in groundwater. Fluoride, which is present in high concentration in volcanic ash, is readily soluble in water and forms another natural source. EPA regulations are meant to protect water customers, water consumers, from exposure to natural fluoride, and never to justify or authorize artificial fluoridation of drinking water. Anthropogenic sources of fluoride include agricultural fertilizers, combustion of coal and phosphate fertilizers. The aerial emission of fluoride in gaseous form during these activities reaches the surface by fallout of particulate fluorides, and during rainfall, they percolate with the rainwater, thus reaching the groundwater table. We know this as acid rain. Thanks to the Clean Air Act, it's a felony to release fluoride into the air, but that same toxic poison is collected and sold to cities to artificially fluoridate drinking water. Since ingestion of high fluoride has a long-term effect on human health, it's essential to monitor its concentration in water for drinking. Fluoride contamination being a prominent and widespread problem in several parts of the world, as causes for this are mostly natural and unpreventable, educating the people and defluorinating the groundwater before consumption are essential for a healthy world. The other possible sources of intake of fluoride apart from drinking water are through food, beverages, pharmaceutical drugs, dental products, and various chemicals used in the fumigating, fertilizing, and manufacturing processes. Public policy in the City of Salina, Kansas contributes to the anthropogenic fluoride levels contaminating the environment. The city buys pallets loaded with 50-pound bags of sodium fluoresilicate from a Florida company. The toxic powder comes from locations in the U.S. and China. Over 99% of this chemical waste product is flushed down the drain, contaminating the earth and groundwater, making it impossible, in good faith, for Salina to consider itself an environmentally friendly green community. You have the power to stop this environmental contamination. Please repeal the ordinance and stop artificial fluoridation of Salina's drinking water. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
For the record, both the CDC, which is the Center for Disease Control...
Hey, Lou, I'm sorry, I know, I know who you are, but for the people at home, can you tell them your name, please?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Lou Tryon, 2122 Leland Way. For the record, both the CDC and the American Dental Association say fluoride only works topically, applied directly to the teeth. So why are we wasting taxpayers' money to purchase fluoride? The National Research Council, NRC, in 2006 estimated the total daily intake of fluoride for an average person was between 0.8 and 11.5 milligrams daily. This daily average is based on consumption of water in 1 milligrams in a liter, toothpaste, food, pesticides that are made from fluorides, and air pollution. In the 1930s and the 1940s, the American Dental Association actively condemned fluoride, saying fluoride made teeth structurally weak. It interferes with the process of enamel formation, making... It interferes with the process of enamel formation, making the enamel porous and pitted, where debris and bacteria can be trapped in it." And this comes from the NRC committee meeting in 2006. "In the 1950s, when the government began to promote fluoridation, the American Dental Association stopped condemning fluoride and completely reversed its stand and supported fluoridation immediately. Why? How could fluoride interference with enamel, with the enamel formation now be good for teeth? Are recommendations more important than scientific evidence? Since 1999, nine cities in Kansas have stopped fluoridation. Harper, Wakefield, Wellington, Humboldt, McPherson, Winfield, Abilene, Hutchison, Wichita, and Bueller. Parsons, Lawrence, Topeka, and Salina are all joining these progressive cities that now realize in the 21st century fluoridation has run its course. It is outdated, just like the cigarettes, the lead, the DDT as the perfect weed killer, and asbestos. For the record, we want freedom to choose whether to use fluoride and whether to go to our dentist and get the pharmaceutical grade rather than the hazardous waste grade from China. KC Industries told us on the phone that they ship it out unrefined, and that was their wording, unrefined. Does that sound like it's cleaned up? Is it compassionate, really, to give people a hazardous waste? We have gathered 382 signatures, which I'll give you in just a minute, in one month's time. These people, along with Salina cares, are requesting that you vote today to stop fluoridation. Repeal that ordinance, 7096, that began fluoridation 46 years ago. That was after the citizens of Salina voted down fluoridation 5 to 1 in 1956. So we're asking you, please vote against a hazardous waste that comes from China. We know what their environment is like. We know what their factories must be. Do they have environmental laws like we do? I don't think so. Thank you."
Lynda Rickman, 719 East Ash. "In 1988, the National Institute of Dental Health produced the largest and most comprehensive study on 39,000-plus children in 84 regional areas. The study showed no significant difference in cavities in fluoridation versus non-fluoridation. To add verminitude to this, it was found by Dr. Richard Shames that the original research to add fluoride to drinking water was flawed. In 1945, the U.S. Public Health Service began to add sodium fluoride into the municipal water of Grand Rapids. Over a 10-year period of time, its dental decay rates were to be compared to those of Mustagon. However, after 10 years, it was to be determined if fluoride was both safe and effective. Strangely, long before that study was completed, Mustagon was also fluoridated, and the decisions and endorsements overshadowed the fact that tooth decay rate in non-fluoridated Mustagon had decreased about the same amount as the fluoridated city of Grand Rapids in the same amount of time. So if it doesn't do anything for your teeth or make 'em better, why are we doing it?"
Thank you, Lynda. Is there anybody else today?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Boy, you guys are kinda getting barraged today with a lot of information, aren't you? The health and safety and welfare is a requirement of the Salinas' comprehensive plan and state law. Number one, the health of the public, you should do no harm to the public. Number two, safety of the public, adding a chemical into water that is unsafe can cause health issues, short and long term. Number three, welfare of the public, overexposure to fluoride causes increased costs. Remember, your elected duty is health, safety, and welfare of the public. I would recommend that, there was a point in the, in the past here that, I think the Commissioners made the comment they were gonna do their own research about this fluoride issue. And I would, I would like all the Commissioners that have done research to describe each, to describe what research was done to determine their position and to share it in detail with the public. And I'd like to start with Randall Hardy.
Can I start instead?
No, I don't want us to have Randall Hardy. Please.
Actually, we probably don't have time today.
That's fine. And I have done some research, and I'd be glad to share thoughts with you. I think today is maybe not the day. I agree with...
Well, you did do research, then.
I absolutely did.
Okay. Kay, did you do some research?
I did. I'll share that with you at a later date. We have a lot going on on our agenda today.
And the, and the mayor, did you do the same thing?
I did.
Aaron, did you do the same?
You know I did.
Mr. Blanchard, did you do the same?
I didn't commit to do my own personal research because I'm not a scientist, and I think that any research I did on this would probably be not very reliable. What I did do is I committed to listening to both sides, and I think we had a public hearing, a special meeting where we had both sides present. And they conducted, you know, they each had time to present their projects. That's what I committed to do, was to listen to both sides, take the advice of the real experts, and formulate my decision based on, on that. And I believe that I have fulfilled that obligation. And in case you're curious, I, I haven't seen evidence that would suggest that we need to remove the fluoride.
So we have a position, and one person has a position on the research that they've done, right?
He didn't ask for a position. He asked if we'd done research.
Well, he just gave his position. Isn't that true?
Yeah, but you didn't say, you didn't ask us for a position.
Well, he, he's the one that embellished that comment. I, I responded to it. I would like for the rest of the Commissioners to share their research in writing to everyone at this meeting.
Yeah. I'm not gonna share mine in writing.
Well, remember, your elected duty is to the self...
My elected duty is not to sit here and ad nauseam write, drawing out dissertations on what my decisions are.
What is your position?
I'm elected to protect the people. I feel that fluoride does protect the people. Researchers much smarter than you or I have come to a conclusion that differs from this. And that's fine. I listen to their opinions. I like the people over here. It doesn't change my opinion on whether fluoride is good for the people or not. I feel that it is. I'm with John. If you want my position on it, every single thing that you guys have discussed today is a tenth of the truth. You talk about Europe, you talk about all these things, and we can go in back and forth continuously. I've read the data that's there. Let's face it, the extent of our research is a Google search. None of us are scientists. We go on there, and we read all the stuff that's posted by somebody else. Not a single person that's spoke in this room has the ability, as John said, to make a scientific decision. I base my science off many, many PhDs, the American Dental Association, American Cancer, I mean, all of these organizations that stand behind it, not the Helsinki Institute...
Some of these organizations are actually rejecting what you're saying.
No, they're not, actually.
Well, what are the ones that are rejecting it?
You wanna list? Move on to NY, I'll, I'll research it for you. Give you a list. We could be here for a couple hours.
Anyway, I don't, I don't think we have time for that.
They're a bunch of nobodies, you know, like CDC, things like that.
Don't take a chance on the future. Do the right thing. Repeal the fluoride ordinance. And if you wanna put it back in, get a referendum vote to put it back in, not put the load on everybody else. Have you ever done a petition to get anything changed?
Just, just so Ray, so I understand that your idea of government, I just need to be sure on here, and maybe the at-home players need to know. So if we're up to Ray...
Wait a minute. This is not a personal attack, is it?
No, I'm just asking if it were up to you. I'm saying that you, you asked whether we should do a referendum on this. I'm just trying to figure out how your form of government would look like in Salina, Kansas.
We're not talking about a form of government. We're talking about the law.
Okay. So, so in your opinion, everything that's on today's agenda should go out for a public vote?
No. I don't believe that.
How are you deciding which one's a public vote?
Well, the ones that where the public gets involved with it and decides that is there's an issue involved there.
Well, 382 is not enough to get it, to get it on the ballot. I'm sorry.
Well...
I, I, I mean, you have the ability to go out and get it put on the, on the, on the, on the agenda, on the vote. Go do it. I mean, that, that's my thought. I mean, you, you come up here before us every day, and I'm not saying it's a waste of time. You're entitled to it, and I appreciate your interest in civic-minded activities.
I don't come up here every day.
No, I'm saying, no, I'm saying, they come up here pretty regularly, and it's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But it's the same thing over and over. And if you have the amount of people and you feel like it should go to a public vote, you have an avenue to do that. You can go out, you can get the signature.
So you can do the same thing by repealing the ordinance. And if they want it in the water, let them do a referendum vote.
I have a pretty good idea that the majority of us don't wanna do that.
Well, it only takes three to say no.
Well, you got two for sure.
Well, maybe the other three won't.
They still have time. Today's meeting, it's gonna be a long one, but they may still have time to bring it up.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Always a pleasure. Thank you.
Does the vote in 1956...
Lou, you would have to, you would have to come up, and if we can keep the statements brief, I might have to continue the citizen forum and move something up.
Does the vote that the citizens did in 1956 and turned down fluoridation 5 to 1, does that mean anything at all to you?
I would, I mean, I'm sure if we look back, I'd have to look to council, but I'm guessing that the decision that was made afterwards, I'm sure was legally done and in a process that, that was there.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, it was, 12 years later. But what I'm saying is, if, if the citizens don't really count, what about that vote, 5 to 1?
Yeah, we're not saying the citizens don't count. We're saying if the citizens wanna count, and if it's important enough to them, there is a mechanism for them to go and get the signatures and have it put on the ballot, if it's important enough. But, you know, we eat up a lot of time with this, and you ask us to do things, and I think we've been relatively clear that we don't wanna make a change. And of course, you have that right at the ballot to either vote us out and find five people, but you may find that you have 1,800 people who are willing to sign a signature to, to keep it in. But, but you have a mechanism to, to do it.
We know that.
Yeah.
We understand that. We just want, for the record, to know where we stand, where each Commissioner stands, so that we know what our next step should be. That's all.
Sure.
Thank you.
And if they're looking for a poll, I don't know if, if...
Yes.
If that's fine.
Couldn't we have a poll? Do you mind?
If, if any of the Commissioners wish to answer, I, I'm fine to say that I still feel fluoride has, has, as does the CDC, benefits the public health.
And for the record, we appreciate that. Mr. Blanchard, do you wanna give an opinion as to where you would vote at this point?
Yeah, basically, based on the information that I've got from both sides and, and so on, I, I don't feel inclined to vote in favor of removing it from the water supply.
You would not?
I would not vote to remove it.
Okay.
At this time, I wouldn't vote to remove it.
Okay. And?
I told Mr. Ruska I would determine that at a later date.
Okay.
And at the, at the current time, I don't see a need to change our policy.
Okay. And that's what we needed to do, to know. Thank you so much. Okay?
Again, as I said before, I definitely appreciate your, your, when you come, I mean, you've been very professional and very nice with the information, and I can't complain about that. We just...
And you have been respectful to us.
And, and I, and I definitely think there are definitely points, I mean, it was John and we spoke the other day, I mean, there are definitely points that we hit on where we are in agreement on some issues, but, but just not the overall picture of it, so...
Well, we are prepared to go ahead with our petition. So we will go ahead with it. And we were told we need to get it finished by the end of July, and we will have it finished by then, so the city clerk can bring you the number of names. This small petition was not meant to do that.
Sure.
It was just to show you that it's more than just Salina cares people that want to take the fluoride out.
Yeah. And, and you mentioned you did have a list of the names if you wanted to pass those out of court.
I'm gonna make sure you get that. Yes, absolutely. Thanks.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it still never, never hurts, I mean, to have it.
They get their legit...
Oh, I thought you had copies of them.
And we didn't make sure, I have copies, we didn't make sure they were registered voters, anything like that.
Right, just the interest.
We have to put them on a secret list to be watched, is the whole thing. That's all. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Am I wrong?
No. I'm not that passionate about fluoride, yeah.
John?
Okay. And for the record, John Perez, 2262 Sherwood Lane. And I would like to direct this more towards Aaron. Aaron, I know that you said that you don't wanna resend or repeal the ordinance, but what I am asking you is the freedom of choice. I mean, even if it was good for us, if it's bad, I think is irrelevant. I think the fact that we should have a choice, I mean, we already have the government telling, telling us what we have to feed our kids in school. I don't want the government telling me that I can't eat Twinkies. The government telling me that I only have to eat vegetables. I, and, and I feel that that's where we're going. And, and I did have something, and this isn't aimed at anybody in particular, but if the shoe fits, and it goes to the, the term nanny state. Nanny state refers to a government having excessive interest or control over the welfare of its citizens. Now, I'm not aiming that at anybody, but I would like for us to at least have a choice. And, and just because something's good for us doesn't mean that we want it. I mean, we, we should have a choice, I believe, Aaron. And that's, I'd like for you to consider that.
I agree. I, I mean, and, and we've talked about that before, and I've said if there is one thing where you have a little bit of my ear, is, is, is the medication side of it. I would still argue that it's a naturally occurring item, and we are regulating that amount. In some areas, like you said, where they remove it, they're not removing it altogether, they're, they're taking it down to a level that's acceptable. There are other things that naturally occur in water that we have to remove as well, and that could be a task or question, gets a little deeper than my expertise goes. But again, we're not necessarily medicating the public so much as we may be removing it, and some things are naturally occurring. But I agree with you, the unfortunate side of things in this, and I'll throw my little, my Republican hat on here and, and say that, the unfortunate thing is, is that we can't tell people how to live their lives, and then you and I end up paying for those people who chose to live their lives so poorly. And so unfortunately, it's a little give and take, and that's my political rant for the day. But I wish we could tell people to eat vegetables and exercise, but I probably wouldn't listen to that plan either very well. But like I said, if you do have a little bit of my ear, it's the medicating side of it, and, and we've discussed that before, so, yeah.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And you do have really nice teeth again, did I mention that? Really is.
For the record, Lynda Rickman, 719 East Ash. Quite true, most of us here do not have doctor's degrees, including, I assume, most of the Commissioners as well. But I would like to know what it is that you would consider medical or dental knowledge? Because I have a list up here of many different abstracts connected in with legal and ethic issues, the dental careys, the fluoride bone effects. Understand that these are published in peer-reviewed journals, like the Journal of American Medical Association. Do you consider those of expert opinions?
See, my, my question is, are we talking about concentrations that are different than what we experience here? Are we talking about controlled studies? Are we talking, you know, there's a lot of variables.
A lot of these have to do with controlled studies, yes. So I'm wondering, do these count? Because this is where I get my information from. This is where I do my research at. Yes, I've read a lot of these abstracts. So if you would like a copy of these, I can sure give it to you.
Concentration does make a difference, too.
Sure.
Quite right. But also...
For instance, in, in Europe, I was wondering, well, while, while he was saying that most of Europe has taken fluoride out, well, what's the natural occurring fluoride level in European water?
Here's the thing, of course, this is going back to what Aaron has stated about medication. In the 1930s, fluoride was used for the treatment of hyperthyroidism, which is where the thyroid works too fast. It was used to control it. However, they also found out, according to several doctors who had used it at one time, that two to five parts per million, or even less, actually depresses the thyroid in those people who have normal thyroids or, like myself, hypothyroid. So I'm increasing medication because I've had to live in a place that is fluoridating their water.
These are states. Just, just for Randall's, just for Randall's information, that a common myth is European countries have rejected fluoridation, so why would we fluoridate the water? The truth is, millions of people living in Europe are receiving the benefits of fluoride. Europe has used a variety of programs to provide fluoride benefits to the public... Europe has used a variety of programs to provide fluoride benefits to the public. Water fluoridation is one of these programs. Fluoridated water reaches 12 million Europeans, mostly residents of Great Britain, Ireland, and Spain. Fluoridated milk programs reach millions of additional Europeans, mostly in Eastern Europe. Salt fluoridation is the most widely used approach in Europe, in fact, at least 70 million Europeans consume fluoridated salt, and this method of fluoridation reaches most of the population in Germany and Switzerland. These two countries have among the lowest rates of tooth decay in all of Europe. Italy has not tried to create a national system of water fluoridation, but the main reasons are cultural and geological. First, many Italians regularly drink bottled water. Second, a number of areas in Italy have water supplies with natural fluoride levels that already reached the optimal level to prevent decay. Technical challenge is a major reason why fluoridated water isn't widespread in Europe. In France and Switzerland, for example, water fluoridation is logistically difficult because of the terrain and because there are tens of thousands of separate sources of drinking water. This is why Western Europe relies more on salt fluoridation, fluoridation, fluoride rinse programs, and other means to get fluoride to the public. So that's my biggest problem, is when you come to us and you say, oh, look, Europe doesn't fluoridate, it's because of all of these factors. So all I'm saying is, when you come to us, give us stuff that isn't so easy to refute. I mean, give us some real stuff that, that it doesn't take a 30-second search of ilikemyteeth.org for you at home.
So that's your peer-reviewed science, sir? That you just told us, you look up on Google, you're gonna find things all over the place. You say that's peer-reviewed scientific literature. I said 98% of the people in Europe, are you saying that's not true? I said Southern Ireland is still getting the fluoride. You just reminded me that I told the truth.
Right.
Okay?
And they have healthy teeth.
But you're saying they're getting it in their salt, but not in their water? I have a choice to take salt, but not water.
No, they get water, they get in the water.
For the record, I want everybody to be able to look at gnosticmedia.com, to look at the interview Walter Graham, who kicked the fluoride, led the protest in Northern Ireland. It's true that Europe is not using it in their water, that's what we said. So also, if you look at fluoride accidents at actiopa.org, there's been over 100 accidents in the United States. They're so serious that they have to evacuate over 200 families, 200 houses, when a truck wrecked. Do we want that kind of stuff happening in our hometown? I recommend that we find out exactly what's in the water, through chemical analysis, if we have to do it ourselves. Once we find out what the ingredients are, we get the peer-reviewed scientific studies of how those affect us, and if we need to, if they still don't want to tell us, answer our questions, or take it out of the water, that we make a case. And that's what the legal system does, is to find the truth. They're really good at finding out the truth beyond a shadow of a doubt. Thank you.
I have a document from the Journal of the American Dental Association.
And Cheryl, if you can, again...
Cheryl Mustfeld, 1035.
Okay, that's not what I was gonna ask, but thank you, if you can keep it quick, because we've been at an hour on citizen forums, and after you're done speaking, I am gonna move up our public hearing.
Well, we did ask to be put on the agenda, and we were told just to show up, so that's what we did.
Okay, which is great, and I do appreciate that, but again, after you.
This is 1944. It says, "We do know that the use of drinking water containing as little as 1.2 to 3.0 parts per million of fluorine will cause developmental disturbances in bones as osteosclerosis, spondiosis, and osteo, another one I can't even say, as well as gorgor, and we cannot afford to run the risk of producing such serious systematic disturbances and implying that is at a present doubtful procedure intended to prevent the development of dental disfigurements among children." That's the American Dental Association, telling you that it is highly toxic. "In the light of our present knowledge or lack of the chemistry of the subject, the potentialities of harm far outweigh those for the good."
Okay. Is there any way we could put a warning on water that if we submerged ourselves in too much of it, we might drown? Again, I think we're talking about the levels, we keep talking about these levels. You talk about a truck careening off the highway with huge amounts, and you're trying to compare it to the four parts or six parts per million we're putting in drinking water. Again, please only come to us with stuff that's relevant, and we might give a little more attention to it. I mean, it's just, some of this stuff is so fantastic in nature that I just, it just, it's almost become...
Excuse me, Aaron, but it does accumulate in your bones, as the statement that my husband made earlier.
That's what you guys...
It was a government study, it's on the government side, PubMed.
World Health Organization, the CDC, all these places...
And I've sent you several emails.
They don't agree with you.
How many of those did you read?
Oh, we read them.
Did you?
I mean, yeah, but I mean, after a while, the facts just, I mean, they just overwhelm these emails that you send so much. At some point, I probably will stop reading them, and that's what I'm saying, for all the information you send, I think you run a real risk of us probably giving it a lot less attention. You might have had a better luck if you'd kind of stayed the course on the things that might have a little bit of, well, I'd say a little bit of fact, but I'm having a hard time finding any statements that you've made that really are factual.
Well, maybe if you paid more attention versus spending all your time on your little laptop there.
Well, I mean, I'm just researching your information and looking at things like the World Health Organization and the CDC, and I don't know, probably multiple PhD people who disagree with you. And I'm not saying maybe you're not smarter than them, but it's their area of expertise.
I don't know who those are, but I know Dr. Wes Jackson, a certified genius. Dr. Wes Jackson, my grandfather knows him.
Sure.
I know him, my father knows him, he's a certified genius, going to the MacArthur Award, $300,000. He said the fluoride's bad. I don't know you.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I don't know what's in that bag, that they have to chemically have to have a hazmat suit, they have to have a face mask on when they pour it into there, all right?
I stood right there at the water treatment plant.
I want to know what's in the bag.
I've stood right there at the water treatment plant, it tumbles down, I'm not in a chemical suit.
So I can go there, too, and look at it, take samples?
I don't think the general...
Can we get samples of it?
I don't think the general...
Can we take samples of it?
You can probably get a sample right in your faucet. You can probably get a sample right in your faucet.
No, I want a sample of what's in the bag, so we can analyze it, can we get that?
I would guess we could probably make that available, I don't have a problem with that.
If you're just throwing the bags away into the trash can, I suppose I could have a bag.
I'm going to ask the mayor to, I just want to make a motion that we move on tonight, please. I have not made my decision, and I appreciate you coming, but I really do think we need to get on, Madam Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry, Mayor, there is one quick point I do feel compelled to make, if all the citizens have had an opportunity, and if this would be the right time. If I may.
Yeah.
Just a quick point, related to a procedural matter that has been raised, and that was reference to the initiative and referendum process by which anyone can petition for a matter to be brought first before the commission and potentially to a referendum. A technical point, but one I feel compelled to at least alert everyone to now. And Ms. Tryon and I had an opportunity to talk about this a couple of times, just to be sure we're all on the same page. That process is available for addressing matters which are legislative in nature and not matters which are administrative in nature. And again, we've spoken some, Ms. Tryon and I, not to put words in her mouth, but we have had some conversation, and I think we understand that the petition, if they are to pursue that formal petition, is best done with the benefit of counsel. And statutorily, that then goes to the county councillor for review. The election, should there be one, is under the purview, of course, of the county election officer. So the statute provides that the petition is first reviewed by the county councillor. The county councillor, Mike Montoya, is always good about any time it's a city matter, consulting with me in his review of that. And just so everyone knows, as I sit here at this moment, I can't say that I know conclusively the answer as to whether this is a legislative matter or an administrative matter. We do have some fairly recent case law in Kansas, the Fairway case, just as a couple of years ago. So we have some guidance there, and obviously, this matter has been dealt with in various forms of referenda in different locations. And I assure everyone that if presented with a petition, we'll look carefully and objectively at that question. But just so everyone knows, that will be part of the analysis if the matter moves to that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harisca, we've already had a comment once, is it to do with the same thing?
I want to know what the difference between legislative and administrative is legally. Do you know that answer?
I'll send you a copy of the Fairway case, I think that would be the best way to, so you'll have the Kansas Supreme Court's analysis of that, rather than my paraphrasing.
Thank you.
And I did have Commissioner Crawford that asked to put the citizen forums, move it down, and move up the public hearing. Will we need a second on that?
For future purposes of your...
Or just right now, since we do have a full house, and it's already been at an hour, we have a couple of big agenda items, so if we can move the citizen forums and postpone the rest of them until later in the meeting.
Oh, certainly, that's your prerogative.
She had asked.
That would be your prerogative, isn't it?
And the one thing I would then ask, Mayor, is if there is anyone here who is not either dealing with the St. John's issue or potential citizen's forum, if maybe you'd raise your hand, and maybe we could move your item. I suspect that the Heritage Commission item that's before us on the St. John's Hospital building may take some time. So if there's anybody here that has anything that is not related to these, that may come further in the agenda, you'd maybe let yourself be known, what item would that be? Item eight, that could be a time-taker, too. Anybody else, maybe, is the by-center stuff, perhaps?
I think that we have probably a large, just a large amount of stuff on the agenda for all the items, and probably...
Okay, just keep it in its order?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I would suggest that, Madam Mayor, perhaps that if you could just, we can find out if anybody else has anything on public forum, because we might be done instead of moving it.
Is there anybody else here for citizen forums that has not spoke yet? Okay, we can go ahead and move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing on an appeal of the Heritage Commission's approval of certificate of appropriateness. Application number CA 13-2, requesting approval of a certificate of appropriateness to allow the demolition of the vacant St. John's Hospital building located at 139 North Penn Avenue.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, before I begin my report, I'd like to call on Mr. Bankston to introduce Todd Luckman, who is gonna serve as our counsel for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew, Mayor and Commissioners. The matter that is before you is a quasi-judicial nature, of a quasi-judicial nature. Our law firm represents both the city of Salina, Clark, Maize, Lynnville, and also represents Salina Regional Health Center. In order to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest, as you would be advised of the legal aspects of this case, I appreciate the opportunity to introduce Mr. Todd Luckman. Mr. Luckman is with the Stumbo Hansen Firm of Topeka. Mr. Luckman and his colleagues represent another, a number of municipalities in the Topeka area and have experience with this sort of proceeding. Mr. Luckman also served to advise the Heritage Commission as they considered this matter. There are really two contexts in which you might have special need for legal counsel. Of course, Mr. Luckman is available during your proceedings today in the open session. If you would have need for any counsel on an attorney-client privileged basis, that can occur in executive session, as would be the normal circumstance for receiving legal advice of a confidential nature. Similarly, in that you are in a quasi-judicial proceeding, you have the prerogative, if it is your wish, to deliberate in terms of any findings that you might wish to make in a closed session, which is not, it is different from an executive session in that under the Kansas Open Meetings Law, it is simply a proceeding to which the Open Meetings Law does not apply. It is simply a closed session, if you find need or benefit from that opportunity. So I appreciate Mr. Luckman's being here to assist you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bankston. Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, we're going to, we have given you this notebook in advance of the meeting. It has a report from staff, it has a summary of our heritage conservation ordinances, it has all the application and supporting materials that was submitted by the Salina Regional Health Center, and then at the end of that, you have the set of minutes from the Heritage Commission meeting that was conducted in December. So we'll just give you a little bit of the overview of the history, but to make sure that everybody is on the same page, the area outlined in blue is the property that comprises the Penn campus or the former St. John's Hospital. This parcel right here is a separate parcel, that is the Medias Center that was constructed in 1951 and formerly served as a nun's convent, that is not part of your application today, and it's not part of the hospital complex, nor are some of the other surrounding properties down in this area part of today's proceedings, although they are proposed for demolition. There was a time in 1912 when it was recognized that there was a growing need in Salina for a public hospital, and the Sisters of St. Joseph and Sacred Heart Church combined together and provided land and raised fund for the construction of a hospital, which was begun in 1913 and completed and dedicated on June 28, 1914. So we're getting close to a 100-year anniversary of the construction of that original building. One of the things that is notable is that St. John's Hospital was referred to or identified as being Salina's first $100,000 building. It was constructed at a cost of $136,000. The original construction was T-shaped, it was in a utilitarian style with Beaux-Arts detailing on the front. It was four stories in height, had 112 feet of frontage on Penn Avenue. Some of the postcard views that were done here actually show the building being farther away from Penn than it was actually constructed, so you get a little bit of a distorted view. There's never been a green space between the street and the hospital, so some of that was amplified. But the front of the hospital has remained largely the same, but in 1958, the original east portico and platform here was removed, and there was a glassed-in lobby that was constructed there. And there have been numerous modifications over time, but just to get an idea, the original hospital contained 70 beds, treated 400 patients in its first year of operation. In 1958, it treated 5,700 patients, so it was a growing concern. As we pointed out, there were all kinds of additions and improvements made over time that have altered the building. It now comprises nearly a full city block, except for the Medias Center that I pointed out at the corner. We pointed out that there were additions in 1951, '65, '69, '78, '81, and '93. John, I'm gonna ask you to go down to the very bottom slide there, the floor plan. And this is, you might need, I don't know if it may, cannot be blown up, but you have this in your packet as well. But the purpose of this drawing is twofold, one, to show you, this is the very original 1914 hospital building, which we indicated is kind of a T-shaped building, and then it's very hard to read the individual numbers, but you see that each one of these numbers here represents a year when that addition was added on to the hospital. Probably the largest, most significant addition was a four-story patient tower that was constructed in 1951, and it was designed and constructed to be very compatible with the very original construction. This brings us to 1995, and there was a merger between the Asbury Salina Regional Medical Center and St. John's Hospital, and it became Salina Regional Health Center. It had a Santa Fe campus and a Penn campus, and the Penn campus was closed in approximately 2004, and there were some other operations in the structure, but essentially, from 2011 to the present, the structure has been vacant and unoccupied. Back in 1997, the Salina... to the present, the structure has been vacant and unoccupied. Back in 1997, the Salina City Commission voted to designate the former St. John's Hospital as a heritage conservation property due to its cultural and historical significance. And the primary purpose of that was to require Heritage Commission and/or City Commission review of any proposal to demolish or remove the structure, and that's why we are here today. We did want to point out that in addition to this building, if you think about the United Building, Oakdale School, Pioneer Hall at Kansas Wesleyan University, those are other examples of properties that the City Commission designated as conservation properties, which means essentially before they are demolished, that they are entitled to some form of a public hearing. There are a number of factors that the ordinance requires that the, both the Heritage Commission and City Commission, take into account in their decision-making. You have a rather lengthy letter and explanation there from Salina Regional Health Center in support of their application, describing how they have made efforts to sale, for the sale, lease, use, or redevelopment of this property, and explaining their decision-making process for deciding that removal of the hospital is necessary because it's no longer economically feasible or prudent to maintain it in its present configuration and condition. So they are proposing to remove the hospital structure in its entirety. If the request is approved, they plan to reserve the existing mature trees wherever possible and continue maintenance of those, as well as seeding the grounds to grass and maintaining that pending future development plans for the site. They do have some plans that are conceptual about having a recognition monument on the site denoting it as the site of St. John's Hospital. Development Services staff received a demolition permit application from the hospital. That triggered the setting of a hearing before the Heritage Commission for this particular property. Again, in your packet, there was a letter from Mr. Henen Camp outlining information about the condition of the building, efforts made to locate a redeveloper, and addressing how the standards for review were met in their opinion. Also, at the Heritage Commission meeting, Mr. Henen Camp presented a PowerPoint slide presentation. Most of those photos are in your notebook, so you had an advance look at those. Just to go through some of the factors, the current zoning status, this block is zoned R3 multifamily residential. And before, we had a hospital-medical zoning district. Hospitals were addressed through R3 zoning and a conditional use permit. The Salina campus, or the Santa Fe campus, was rezoned to hospital-medical in 2003, but the hospital did not pursue the application here, so it has retained its R3 zoning. And so in order for you to take favorable action on the Health Center's application for demolition permit to remove this structure, you must find that the request is supported by one or more of the following findings that we've laid out, starting on page seven there. The hospital pointed out in their application that use of the structure ceased in 2011. It's been on deferred maintenance since 2002. Since then, water has infiltrated the roof in numerous locations, and they feel their resources would be better used elsewhere than maintaining this vacant facility. Staff would note that this property is not an immediate threat to public health and safety, but it has experienced a great deal of interior deterioration, and it's not going to get better over time if it remains vacant. As far as the architectural integrity of the building, there's only small portions of the east and north facade of the original hospital that are visually intact. Many of, as you could see from those postcards, have been obscured by changes over time. The applicant believes that a return to the original facades would not be practical due to structural and engineering modifications. We just point out that on, when you were on the east side of the building, there are still, you look at the terracotta roof, the, some of the upper floors of the eastern facade still retain some of the original architectural characteristics of the original hospital. One thing that we did note, and has been confirmed, that at least one developer, the Pioneer Group, who did the Roosevelt Lincoln Project, they explored preliminarily the ability to get rehabilitation tax credits, and were told that there had been a lot of loss of original historical material, and that this probably would not qualify for national or state register status, which would make it ineligible for rehabilitation tax credits that had been used on Stiefel Theater and Roosevelt Lincoln. Their plan, they don't have a redevelopment plan, but in terms of the streetscape, they would demolish this hospital to support buildings on the south side of Johnstown. They plan to continue to maintain ownership and would hold the ground until there was a future health-related development which could benefit the surrounding streetscape over time. Staff would point out this is not part of a historic district or conservation district. Much of the surrounding streetscape has been removed to make way for surface parking lots. If you remove the structures on the south side of Johnstown, there is really not much left of the original context or neighborhood. We do believe, however, that you have a familiar feature that's been in this neighborhood for 99 years, and it is a significant four-story structure, so it certainly would have a visual impact if it's removed and not replaced by any replacement construction. The other question is, is how desirable is it to retain this and have it to continue to deteriorate without a productive use? Another factor that the Heritage Commission and you are to consider is what is the reuse plan and how that affects surrounding buildings and structures. And as we pointed out, their plan is just to maintain this as a grassy area, to erect a recognition monument for the Sisters of St. Joseph, and essentially, under this proposal, there would not be any remaining surrounding buildings that would be affected, because you would have vacant on the east and vacant on the south, and only the children's center on the west. As we noted, the R3 district is the current zoning. Medical facilities are conditional use in R3. There are some other uses, reuses, that could be put to this building that would require a conditional use permit. There are no specific or immediate plans for building replacement. In other cases, such as Hawthorne School or Glenn Martin Stadium, the Heritage Commission, City Commission, could put a lot of weight on the replacement plan in terms of comparing it to what is existing. We don't have that here, so this really isn't, the replacement plan is not really a relevant factor for you to base a decision on. And then we get to what we think are the most important decision-making points, and that is, has there been willful or negligent acts that have led to the deterioration of this building? Has the hospital failed to perform normal maintenance and repairs? Has the hospital diligently solicited and attempted to retain tenants? And I'll let Mr. Henen Camp go into that. It's in their written material there, but the, they indicate that the property has been shown to a variety of agencies, groups, and individuals for possible reuse, and that there has been no interest expressed. Just looking at it from staff's perspective and these findings, we don't really have an imminent hazard to public health and safety, so we don't have a replacement plan to evaluate. So really, the most important consideration is this factor in terms of that it has not suffered from willful neglect, and they have diligently sought to solicit tenants, and they've done their best to board and secure the building. Their position is that they would have to maintain a vacant facility at significant expense, and without additional attention, they believe the structure could deteriorate and eventually reach a hazardous condition. As to one other factor, the Salina shared business statement in the strategic plan says that Salina will be a town that is respectful of its heritage. The adaptive reuse of historic and architecturally significant buildings will be encouraged. By way of summary, the Heritage Commission had a public hearing on this on December 4. The hearing ran for approximately two hours on this subject, so they did give it due weight. And at the conclusion of that, they voted six to zero to approve the hospital's demolition request, subject to a condition that they install a monument structure that would denote the presence, or former presence of the St. John's Hospital. And among their findings was, the Heritage Commission found that continued deterioration and vacancy, the structure could lead to a danger to the public, that many of the architectural significance of the structure has been destroyed through years of inappropriate and incompatible additions that don't match up with the historical and architectural integrity of the original hospital. The streetscape would not be affected by demolition and reversion to a landscape lot. The demolition would not affect other conservation district properties or historically registered properties. They felt that the base R3 zoning restricted the reuse of economically feasible uses. They felt that restoration to a mobile and maintainable condition was consistent with city codes, ordinances, and standards. They found that the hospital had not, the property had not suffered from willful neglect by the hospital, and they found that it was not economically feasible to rehabilitate the structure. They also found, based on the representations made by the hospital, Heritage Commission did not think there would be any benefit from delaying the demolition to allow bona fide efforts to market the property, because they felt that the hospital had demonstrated that they had made those efforts. So this comes before you as basically an open review to form your own conclusions and findings and your options. We pointed out to you on page 14 and 15 of your blue sheet report. Option one, you could accept the findings and sustain the decision of the Heritage Commission to approve the issuance of a demolition permit. Option two is, you could overturn the decision of the Heritage Commission and deny the demolition permit. Possible contrary findings would be a finding that St. John's Hospital building is architecturally and/or historically significant, and that demolition would have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. You could find that it has not been sufficiently demonstrated that rehabilitation and reuse of the hospital building is not structurally or economically practical and feasible. You could find that insufficient effort has been made to market the property or consider alternate uses. The third option would be to postpone consideration of this application in order to allow the applicant or any other party to respond to your request for additional information. Some examples of additional information you might want to request could be additional information regarding the condition of the structure, additional information from architects, structural engineers, redevelopment specialists regarding the costs and feasibility of renovation or redevelopment, or additional information about efforts to market the property for renovation or redevelopment. So the record that you have before you is the minutes discussion, the presentation from the Heritage Commission meeting. You're not bound by any of their conclusions or their findings, and we will do our best to, in the reports and what we've provided you, to give you the same or additional information that they have received. John, I don't know if you put up the floor plan with the square footage detail. If you did, I didn't focus on it. This was one question that the Heritage Commission asked that we were not able to answer in the minutes or at the hearing, and the question was, what is the total size of the building? What is the size of the original 1914 hospital compared to the building total? And so the hospital is estimated that they have 180,000 square feet under roof area. By our calculations, it's 170,945 square feet that's under roof that's broken down between basement, first floor, second floor, third floor, and fourth floor, as you see there. The original four-story building that we shaded there, and John will bring back in a minute, has about 9,256 square feet per floor, so a total of 37,000 square feet. So if you look at the total building under roof, the original hospital comprises a little over 20% of the total under roof. If you take the 1951 addition, was, which was an integrated addition architecturally and has the same roof style, that increases that 20,000 square feet. So if you take those two combined, it's 57,368 square feet, or about 33% of the total. So while the heart of the original hospital and the 1951 addition are, is four stories, the majority of the rest of it is one story or in some places two stories. And so this is the original, and this is the 1951 patient tower, and these are various add-ons that occurred over time. John, do you have the map that shows all of the property there that's proposed for demolition, or did that, that's in their packet, but did you, the aerial photo with the yellow highlights on it? No, it's not, it's not in Mr. Henen Camp's PowerPoint. So you do have in your packet, and I just wanted to call your attention to that, there is a table under the maps and graphics, there's a table that lists all the addresses that are proposed for demolition, just so everybody is clear with that. And that includes properties on Johnstown, and that is not part of today's hearing. So we have 110, 112 North Oakdale, 118 North Oakdale, 148 North Oakdale, 708 Johnstown, 712 Johnstown, 714 Johnstown. Those are all proposed for demolition, but they are not part of today's hearing. The only thing that we are subject to today is, we're reviewing the proposed demolition of 139 North Penn, which is the hospital building. The other items are not protected conservation properties. Following up on Mr. Bankston's comments, the Heritage Commission, after hearing all the comments, testimony, and all of that, did recess into closed session with Mr. Luckman to help them formulate a decision and findings, and they found that to be beneficial and helpful, and then reemerged from that closed session, was able to make a motion with findings that you see in the minutes and in the report today. So I'd be open to any questions about the slides or maps, information we provided about the history of the structure, and if not, I would turn it over to other interested parties to speak.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
What was the intent or purpose of the original commission action to establish the heritage conservation ordinance?
It was identified that there were a number of properties throughout, basically the focus was on properties that were in the 1930 city limits of Salina, and properties that might not, for various reasons, be eligible for historic landmark or national register status, and to have a layer of protection for those buildings, such as the United Building, this building, and Glenn Martin Stadium, things of that nature, that were significantly, culturally significant resources for the community, and to set up a process that says, this is proposed for demolition, are we sure that they have... this is proposed for demolition, are we sure that they have made a case for removal?
Was there any voluntary submission of sites to be included in this list, or were they all done independently by another group?
They were all submitted simultaneously from a historic resource survey that was done through a historic preservation grant. The entire list of properties was presented at once and reviewed, and there were, there were two properties that were requested for removal by the owners. This was one of them, and the Chapel Funeral Home at Fifth and South Street. The City Commission removed the Chapel Funeral Home at Fifth and South Street from the list, but declined to remove this property from the list.
I have a number of questions for staff, but also probably, is the applicant going to present something? Because some of the questions that I have might be answered in the.
Mr. Henen Camp has a presentation and a PowerPoint that we have available to go through, but I know he has some written remarks prepared. So we would be prepared to respond to anything that's in our report or any of the maps or graphics that you see there, but the hospital can speak for themselves, and the petitioner can speak for himself.
And I'm sure that if I have questions, that would come back to you.
Yes, we can certainly answer any technical questions that come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. So at this point, would Mr. Henen Camp come up and give his presentation?
I'm representing Salinas Regional Health Center located at 400 South Santa Fe, Salinas, Kansas. I want to thank you for taking time in your business and rather extended City Commission meeting today to address an issue of great importance to Salinas Regional Health Center that was previously approved by the City of Salinas Heritage Commission. Before I get too much deeper into it, I had read the instructions, and it says I have three minutes. I can tell you that that probably won't work, or I'm very willing to adjust my remarks, so.
That was the citizens forum. I think you're good.
Okay, thank you. My request today is that the City Commission ratify the unanimous decision reached by the City of Salinas Heritage Commission at the December 4th meeting, allowing demolition of the Salinas Regional Health Center Penn campus. The material and information that was sent to them in advance of their meeting and supplemented extensively, that was supplemented extensively at the meeting. The information presented was thoroughly considered and deliberated in both open and executive sessions by the City of Salinas Heritage Commission, leading them to the decision made and published. I think to cover all the issues that we addressed at the meeting, it might be best to go through the PowerPoint which is available and start it up. Dean has well addressed this, so I won't spend any more time on it. He's identified the location. This identifies all the properties that we would intend to develop that are kind of circled. We have properties that are out of, that we have already developed, as the Children's Donovan Air Children's Center and the Disaster Recovery Center. When we say that we don't have a plan, that's true. We do not have a specific plan for redevelopment. Our anticipation is we would develop those properties along the lines we've already developed with the Donovan Air's Children's Center and the Disaster Recovery Center as something that is relevant to today's health care or future health care needs of the community. And this is an overview of the same, and I think you've seen that. If you have a question on that, please stop me at any point in time, and I'd respond to those. We'd go to the next slide. These are additional properties. Dean's referred to those. I don't know, we need to go over that again. Here's pictures of them, and I think we can just, if we can just flash, those are ones that we're including in overall demolition process as a Mediah Center. You've seen the pictures. This is the, this is probably the best picture of the Salinas Regional Health Center Penn campus. It's from the east looking west. Another view showing the 1951 building, the Radiation Oncology Center that was done in about 1989, 1990. These are some of the interior conditions, and I can tell you, I had just led a couple of people through here this last Friday, and they are much worse than what these pictures show now. That's the main lobby. Here's the admissions area. And these pictures didn't come out very well. We used flash, but it was apparently darker than we realized. This is a former laundry area. You can see the amount of intrusion we've had. Laundry, environmental service area, you see a lot of mold and mildew. The person, the architect we led through the building last Friday said that he thought we might have exaggerated, but this went from the second worst building it had ever been into the worst, as far as the result of interior condition, which is a concern for us. Next. Second floor, former physician's surgical lounge. This is near radiology. Once again, a lot of water intrusion. Radiation therapy lobby, this does not show well, but it's an exit corridor. You can see the stuff kind of hanging down from there and draping. Next. We'd seen that one previously. Next. This is the former surgery area. Temptations have been maintained, but that hasn't been much good when there's so much water intrusion. And most of the roofs are flat roofs there. There were strong attempts to keep those patched up, but over time, we eventually had to give up on that. We were spending a lot of money trying to keep those roofs patched. The cost, once the water intrusion started on there from a local contractor, was about $700,000 to tear off and re-insulate all the roofs and put appropriate roof back on them. So that alone is a substantial cost. Next slide. This is the west corridor. Shows a lot of damage. All those tile out are places where we're getting leaks. Next. Same again. Next. That's the third floor, the south area, and the third floor, pretty similar throughout. Let's continue. This doesn't show well. The doors are pretty warped, and there's just basically water intrusion problems for there. Next. Just what you see also condensate and water intrusion. That's an alarm system we put in. We've had to kind of scale it back a little bit based on the amount of water that we have in there that activates it unintentionally. What I might do here, there's one thing I want to stipulate. We're not, we're not, we're not stipulating that the Penn campus could not be refurbished. We're stipulating it could not be refurbished economically or to the satisfaction of those that would want that. Over a period of time, these are groups that have taken a look at it, that we've let it through from the times back in 2002. The roof issues are relatively recent. It's been, many people led through it in very good condition, as we attempted to figure out if there were alternate uses that could happen while we were occupying it, and then while we knew we would not be occupied. St. Francis Academy, Community Service USD 305, when they expanded. City of Salinas, we've been through two or three types of things there, most recently when we had met with city and county representatives, maybe considering the Penn campus for development. Many agencies in there, including the Salinas County Health Department, as that issue was worked through. Some of you probably familiar with that. The Masonic Center, we looked actually at a property exchange with them, and that didn't work out via Christie. Many Salinas not-for-profit agencies as a group and service organizations, I thought there was with kitchens and all those functions there, that they could share that space, they could share meeting rooms and kitchens. When they get into that eight to $10 a square foot operating range, I mean, that pretty well made that unfeasible for them. I mean, when you have elevators to maintain, in addition to, we were more recently advised we'd need to have it fully fire sprinkled, which was a significant expense as well. Pioneer Property Group had looked at it. Overland Property Group, another one that I didn't recall, and I can't recall again, Landmark, I think it was. Lonnie Wilson had approached us about purchasing it with another group, Salinas Christian Academy, Catholic Diocese of Salinas, Catholic Charities. Each one of them had their own perspective. Some of it was, well, we would like it if you could take the building down, or if we could only use a portion of the building, or you would do these things for us. In those cases, we just could not make that work. Rolled Equities was a recent one in 2013. They were pretty hard charging on it, and then a lot of these, what happens, we would get some interest, and then we would never hear back again. I mean, I'd make calls, and we just wouldn't hear back. It was, and some did say, you know, we just can't make this work for us. We need to explore alternatives. So this, I don't think is an all-inclusive list, but it's as far as what I could get most recently out of there. KW Commercial is probably our most recent one, and what I'd want to say with that is, after the December 4th meeting, first of all, let me say that we all agree it's unfortunate that we feel it comes to this, but we feel we've done great due diligence, looked at many alternatives for that. We had high hopes in 1995 when we consolidated how we could make use of two facilities. That just didn't come to pass. Since the December 4th meeting with the Heritage Commission, where the company we had most recently interviewed, KW Commercial and Comprize, was noted as another failed attempt, the long list of alternate engagements to repurpose Penn. They had submitted an alternative proposal to us since that time. In the initial and early discussions with Salinas Regional Health Center, the proposal included Salinas Regional Health Center as a heavy financial investor in repurposing, in the repurposing endeavor of Penn, as a multi-unit housing, which we recognized we did not have the expertise or the interest to pursue as presented. We were especially not interested in what we felt was gambling with $20 million for a, what appeared to us a very poor possible return. Our mission is health care. Our vision is health care, and it's not multi-purpose housing, or multi-unit housing, or low-income housing. Post Heritage Commission meeting on December 4th, KW Comprize came to us again on December 10th, and they agreed with us. They said, that probably isn't the thing for you to do. But that said, we would still be interested in considering development of the Penn campus for multi-unit housing. Our Board of Trustees carefully considered that, and at the conclusion of that, decided if they could make it work, they would be willing to give it one more effort. But we recognize, based upon the other explorations that's taken place, that with none of them coming to fruition, and KW Comprize themselves indicated that along the way, there would be necessary tax credits, grants, or other expected funding. If that did not materialize, or if development cost did not fall within the range expected, or if a market analysis revealed that the opportunity was not as expected, along with other deal breakers, the purchase arrangement would be terminated. While willing to give this alternative to KW Comprize's original proposal a chance, SRHC Board of Trustees and leadership recognized there are many breakpoints along the way that the failure, that either resulted in failure or in terminal delays that would not be acceptable to Salinas Regional Health Center. With that, Salinas Regional Health Center petitions the City Commission to endorse the priority termination of the Salinas Heritage Commission allowing demolition. Should the KW Comprize endeavor yield a venture that can make use of the Penn campus to the benefit of the community, we'll be thrilled. We'll be right out there in front cheering on that. But should that not happen, or stall along the way, Salinas Regional Health Center would immediately want to proceed at its own singular discretion with actions to remove the building and prepare the site for future development without a reappearance or reapplication. I think our Board of Trustees wants to do the right thing for Salinas. While I think at the last meeting, I was referred to, maybe not myself specifically, but they felt it was a bullying technique when we were asked specifically by the Heritage Commission, if it were denied by us, and if we're denied by the City Commission to take the action that we have explored in depth and could not come to that, what would we do? And our answer, and I would have to rely on board to confirm that, but my recommendation, board, would be to dispose of the building. If the City of Salinas found it compelling that they could develop it, they would be welcome to do so, and I think we could work out an arrangement there. And there are buyers for the building. I'm not sure what they might do with the building, and what we want to do is what's in the best interest for Salinas. So the short story is, we're willing to work with KW Comprize. If we can make that work, we'll be thrilled. If it can't, we would like to not have to reappear and go through a demolition process again, and we would like you to ratify the decision made by the Heritage Commission previously. I'd respond to questions you might have.
Mr. Henen Camp?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. I was, as I was going through the slide presentation, a thought occurred to me. The day that the last patient was discharged from the Penn campus, there was probably not ceiling tile on the floor, not mold, there wasn't.
There was not.
Paper peeling off the walls.
We were probably pretty good through most of 2011, and the use changed. I mean, we had the patients out, and we continued to use it for IT services, billing services. We had some wound care and office functions, but right, it hasn't been in bad condition since 2002.
How does that not qualify as willful neglect?
Well, I think it's a good question, and appropriate. We did make attempts to, we put $50,000 in repairs for the roof in trying to seal the single ply membranes we had. We thought, well, if we can get another two or three years out of that, we can extend that and hopefully make an alternate use. The alternate uses did not come out, and ultimately, the hospital determined they would not spend any more funds on trying to keep that roof, or actually reach the point of full roof replacement. The best roofs are probably the 1914 and 1951 building sections, with the clay tile, some of that 100 years in age now, and the least amount of flat roofs.
And I guess the second question I have is related to the marketing aspect.
Yes.
Of the building. Once again, I will refer to the slides that you were giving me. I was thinking in terms of my own home, which is actually on that same list, conservation list that Penn campus is on, and I was thinking, well, if I was interested in selling my own home, I would invite a real estate agent in, and we'd walk through, and he'd say, yeah, you need to take that carpet out of the kitchen, you need to, you know, put a coat of paint on or whatever, and then I would do all that. And then, if I was serious, and then I would come, ask him to come by, and he'd take pictures and put them on the website, and a month later, the house is sold, hopefully. The slides that I was shown do not indicate that anyone was really serious about moving the property either. I can't imagine that if you were really serious about transferring that property to anyone, that that building would be allowed to become that, in that kind of shape prior to trying to market the building. You know, in my mind, that Penn campus is a blight in the Conservation District neighborhood, and it's a shame. To me, it made me sad to see those slides, and to see the kind of condition that's been allowed to happen over time.
Well, I think I'm equally sad by the condition. I would disagree with you, Mr. Hardy, regarding the efforts to market that. I have a letter from Pioneer Group, which indicated if we would either tear the building down or sell the building to them for a dollar, they would tear the building down if it was allowed, so they could develop it as it was needed. Landmark was not able to do that. So I think there were strenuous efforts made, but as those increasingly failed to come to fruition, we realized it was probably not a hope or potential for reuse. If you would like to purchase the building, we would be glad to discuss that further with you.
I have a quick, just a few questions here, and then probably for staff.
Sure.
And so we'll let other, the public get up and ask questions, too. But when I reviewed this, and looking through all the materials and so on, the thing that kind of stuck with me is that I don't, I really don't put very much stock in seeing the additions as part of a bona fide historic preservation worthy effort. But the areas of the 1914 portion of the building, and even, I think that they did a nice job with the North Tower and the 51 addition, but that 20,000 square feet, not even as part of that. In all of these efforts, and in the presentation of the slides and so on, and the 50,000 for the roof membrane, I think you kind of mentioned there, that that.
It was patching material.
That would have been toward the really nonhistoric type portions with the flat roofs. As far as the maintenance that was done to try and shore up the building and protect it from decay, and also the marketing efforts, what were the, was there an effort made to separate the historic, the truly historic and the real asset there from the add-ons and the everything else? Or was it always, or were you trying to market, instead of marketing 37,000 square feet, were you trying to market the entire 170,000 square feet?
Well, our attempt was to market however it could be marketed. It would be up to the buyer to determine how they would make best use of the facility. In fact, that is something that KW Comprize. In fact, that is something that KW Comprize has indicated even themselves. If they're successful, they won't be successful with the entire facility, because there's more facility than is needed. Prior to even coming to this presentation, I had had a local structural engineer, Jeff Christ, go through the facility to find out the Penn campus, the 1914 is the oldest section. His outcome was, he felt, and I noted this to the Heritage Commission, that the building could be saved, but he said it would be extraordinarily expensive, I mean, more expensive than a full demolition. We're certainly, I believe, and Board members are here, they can certainly speak to that, willing to entertain even today, and our first objective, of course, commitment is going to be to KW Commercial Comprize, who said, you know, with a fairly detailed list of things that do need to happen, but if those can happen, they can make the building work, and as I said, we'll be thrilled with that. But, he had indicated that he thought the 1914 building, you know, the others could be removed around, but it would be very, very expensive to do so. We did not engage a detailed or expensive study on that, nor would we intend to. Also, there was, I talked with an architect about it, and he said, "Well, you know, to successfully do that would be a very, very detailed study, to make sure how all those are connected, how they would come apart, how they would be returned." And as I said, we're stipulating, we're not saying it can't happen, we're saying, for us, and those we have engaged or looked at, it cannot economically happen. If somebody else can make that happen, that would be great. We've spent many, many years going over that. Good question, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Heineman?
Will you be available to answer questions as they come to?
Yes, in fact, I would like to, I'd like to reserve, I'm never quite sure what might be said after remarks, I'd like to reserve the right to reappear again.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and go on to public comment and open up the hearing?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Go ahead and open up public comment in our public hearing on this matter.
Jim Ravenkamp, 652 South Santa Fe. Obviously, I was the one that filed the appeal and the petition to not have the structure raised. I'd like to start out by saying, I have a lot of respect for the Salina Regional Health Center, and what they've done for our community, and what they continue to do. It's, but it comes down to a historical issue, and I'll go through that with slides and with my verbal presentation, but, you know, don't misunderstand me, it's nothing personal against Salina Regional. I've worked with them before on a different thing, and worked well with them, so it's just one of those things. But, I don't know if anybody knows the story about David and Goliath? That's how I feel right now, because this is a big task, you know, for me, to try to stop an employer of our community, the size of it is, to stop, you know, from, them from raising that 1914 building, and that's the building that I'm most, most interested in. I don't know that they've, you know, ever come up with, you know, any kind of cost, you know, they say that, yeah, there's a, it would be a large amount to separate those buildings. I don't know how much that is, I don't know if it's $2 million, I don't know if it's $3 million, or whatever it might be, but it's a question that I think that needs to be answered, you know, before that 1914 building is tore down. But, anyway, I guess I'm here today to ask the Salina City Commission to override, or resend the Salina Heritage Commission's decision to allow the demolition of St. John's Hospital. These properties are purchased and renovated all the time by developers, we know that, and there's obviously issues involved in it, but, you know, we put men on the moon, you know, and these issues are things that I think we can work around. And my main goal in the Heritage Commission was to try to come up with a group within the community to attempt to find a use for it, whether it's a developer, or whether it's through our community, or just what it might be. You know, when I filed the petition, you know, I was going to start the signatures and all that, but I decided that, you know, it's not the petition signatures, this is about saving a historical building within our community, and more importantly, for us as a community to understand the Salina Kansas Historic Preservation Plan, and, which was adopted in 1995, and maintaining that plan, which I don't think we would be doing by tearing this building down, the 1914 building. We are not doing this by allowing Salina Regional Health Center to demolish part of our history. Another question is, is the city better off with or without this historic property? You know, can we, can we live without it? You know, I'm sure we can, but it's a historical building, I mean, it's 100 years old this year, and it just, I'm an advocate of saving old buildings, and we've taken enough of them down. But, also, I wonder if the Salina Heritage Commission members have read the plan of the Salina Kansas Historic Preservation Plan, and have read the plan, because in my opinion, their decision was a red stamp on their approval. I didn't feel like there was enough questions answered, I mean, asked to be answered, and I feel like, I feel personally, the Heritage Commission did not do their due diligence by asking the simple questions and request the options the planning and development department put before them about questions that could be asked per the preservation You know, I know Jack has said he, you know, talked to the Pioneer Group and all that. I've talked to them on three different occasions, talked to them again this week. They sent me plans, floor plans of what they would do with the building on, you know, on the 1914 side of it. They emailed me copies of those, and which, you know, you know, it seems like there was still interest in it. I mean, they regretfully wished they were not done, so. But, there again, in the Conservation Properties Ordinance, Section 2-469.5, demolition, in considering an application for certificate of appropriateness for demolition of an identified existing building or structure, the Heritage Commission shall determine whether the project substantially complies with the following standards. And, you know, you've probably read through this, if you've read through it, but I'm going to read through it anyway. The demolition is required to alleviate a threat to public health and safety. Obviously, there's no threat to the public health and safety with that building. The architectural integrity of the building or structure is no longer evident, this is not true, that building, because it does have significant architectural evidence, and I think it's a beautiful building, and I think it's one of our most, one of our oldest and architectural buildings that we have in our community. The streetscape within the context of the Conservation District would not be negatively affected, I agree with that. The demolition would not adversely affect the Conservation District in relation to remaining surrounding buildings, I would agree with that. The base zoning of the site is compatible with the reuse of the building, in my opinion, and if it is not, it could be rezoned through the, going through the process. The reuse plan is consistent with existing codes and ordinances for replacement and new construction. There again, if it is, it could be rezoned, and the property has not suffered willful negligence. In my opinion, that is a sticking point for me, because it has been, because Salina Regional Health Center not, they could have put on a new roof on the building and saved it from the damages that you saw on that screen, that they showed earlier. It, you know, there's, and mothballed the building, you know, they could have turned the power off, electricity, whatever, in my mind, they could have just mothballed it. There's been, there's been many, many cases that's been done. The next one would be the denial of certificate of appropriateness for demolition would cause economic hardship as defined and determined pursuant to the provisions of Section 42465, certificate of economic hardship. No, in my mind, this would not cause Salina Regional Health Center an economic hardship, because if they would not have neglected the building, it would not be an issue. Also, the $1.2 million, or the $1 to $2 million that would be spent for demolition could be saved, you know, over, you know, probably through, or probably with putting a roof on it, like he said, $700,000 is probably realistic to put new roofs on all the flat roofs. So, you know, you'd have, you know, almost three, you know, three roof lifetimes before that building was damaged anymore. But that was what caused the damage, and it was purely a neglect on their part not to put new roofs on the building. And they would have had a better chance, obviously, of selling the property, because if I was looking at that building with that kind of damage, I'd question, you know, you know, what kind of money that would involve. But, I've been in the development business, and have found that you can overcome a lot of that, you know, that rain damage, or water damage. Finally, staff believes there's a general agreement that the former St. John's Hospital is an irreplaceable element of Salina's architectural and cultural heritage. The question is whether the Salina Regional Health Center has sufficiently demonstrated that there is no feasible alternative to demolition of the building. I realize that the hospital has indicated, they have looked for buyers for the building, but I feel there's a buyer out there, out there right now. It's just a matter of brainstorming and finding that, and marketing to find that buyer. I understand from a reliable source, and maybe this is who Mr. Heinicamp was talking about, was that there's a reliable, I understand from a reliable source that Salina Regional Health Center presently is now in negotiation with a potential buyer for the 1914 building. I do not understand why the hospital is playing both sides. It's either, and I think he explained it to us, Jack explained it to us, you know, why they didn't want to have to come back. Well, I don't want to have to come back either, but here they're asking to have the building demolished, but yet on the other hand, they're in negotiation with a potential buyer. That just doesn't sit with me in a way that they want it both ways. And, then I go on. I feel as if the Heritage Commission made the mistake of not voting Item 4 or 5. Item 4 was, or the option 4 was, is to defer a decision for demolition for up to one year, or any lesser time period during which the time the applicant must conduct a bona fide effort to preserve the structure. Example, obtaining written estimates from licensed building contractors or architects detailing the actual cost to rehabilitate the property, or place the structure on the market. Item, or, number 5 was, is to deny the demolition request for St. John's Hospital upon making findings of the standards for demolition of the, of Conservation District properties. Let me back up, so maybe you can understand what I just said, because it was a little confusing. Upon making findings of the standards for demolition of the Conservation District properties, and, you know, there's 250 of those, obviously, and that is one of them. And, so, have not, and then I go on, have not been met by the applicant. These findings should have been cited in the motion of the Heritage Commission. Basically, the Heritage Commission took Salina Regional Health Center's findings and non-committed values or costs, and voted to demo, instead of asking, "What is the actual cost going to be?" or to ask other savings ideas, or just asking the questions that you, the two of you were asking already. I mean, there was no discussion about any of that, and those were good questions from the two of you. Also, there's an ordinance in place to protect our properties and community. The ordinance is number 1310693, and is the Property Maintenance Code, and Section 31-3103.2, Item 8, states that the roofing or roofing components that have defects that admit rain, rough surfaces with inadequate drainage, or any portion of the roof framing that is not in good working order, with signs of deterioration, fatigue, or without proper anchorage, and incapable of supporting all nominal loads and resisting all load effects. And then there's Section 31-108.8, Roof and Drainage. The roof and flashing shall be sound, tight, and not have defects that admit rain. Roof damage or drainage shall be adequate to prevent dampness or deterioration in the walls or interior portions of the structure. Roof drains, gutters, and downspouts shall be maintained in good working order and free from obstructions. Roof waters shall not be discharged in a manner that creates public nuisance. Salina Regional Health Center depicted and showed slides, which I was talking about, the damage within the building, which I'm sure they were the worst samples that they could choose. These damages are repairable, you know, in a renovation project. Most of the damage was caused by leaking roofs. I was, in my simple mind, the Salina Regional Health Center could have installed new roofs on the additions and mothballed the building, saving it from damages. There are two sure ways to destroy a building, and the first is by, first would be by fire, and second, to me, would be by water, and that would be by leaking roof. The 1914 portion of the building does not have the extent of damage because of the roof style, and there again, my personal opinion, they will And there again, my personal opinion, they willfully neglected the property by not replacing the roof on those flat roofs. They've known about this problem since 2009. I talked to a professional about the cost to replace the roof, and he guessed that it would cost anywhere from $400,000 to $800,000. And realistically, probably after it was set down, it'd be $800,000, you know, so. But you can install almost, you know, three roofs, like I said, and you never know, the roof could have been damaged from hail. And I'm not accusing Salona Regional Health Center of this, but, you know, was it damaged from hail? And if it was, you know, there's insurance that could have been collected on it to repair those roofs. And we've definitely had in 2008, or I don't know which year it was, but we've, we've had some, some, you know, good hailstorms that could have damaged it because the buildings I've owned have had to put two, two new roofs on them. And, but now Salona Regional Health Center is going to spend one and closer to $2 million to have this building razed. This just simply does not make sense to me. They could have used a portion of the $2 million to install, to install a new roof and mothballed it until they found the potential buyer. I've had the experience with, you know, dilapidated buildings, and we have as a community. You know, I purchased the 1932 Firestone Building, and if anybody had ever been in that building before I bought it, that was a willfully neglected building also with holes in it, in the roof. Rainwater was coming in, there was five to 600 pigeons just living in there, and all the glass was broken out. And we took that building and refurbished it for, for what I would consider a, not a small amount, but we didn't overdo it in the, in the cost. But, so, you know, I know, I know what it, I know what it costs to, to take a dilapidated building and redo it. And, and I know what a willfully neglected building is because they were in the process of, I believe, condemning a Firestone Building and tearing it down. And, and I thank God saved that building. Now you can look at it and it looks even better, you know, than what it did when I, when I renovated it. You know, you know, obviously, the first thing I did was put a new roof on it, mothballed it for a year and a half until, until we renovated it into a general air showroom and, and office space and, and the shop area. And now Salona Surgical Heart Center has it and has done a wonderful job with it. The most important building we saved was the Watson Fox Theater. I mean, obviously, people also wanted to raise that building, but the city stepped in and put a new roof on it and mothballed it. If they wouldn't have, it would have been, it would have had holes in the roof, it would have had water damage everywhere. But they had the foresight to, to put a new roof on it and mothballed it until we came up with the use. Now look at it, the theater is one of the biggest assets and success stories within our community and the state of Kansas. But it took a vision and the foresight of the city to mothball it. Another example of an historic building that was saved was from demolition is the Marymount Administration Building, which was saved from being razed by the Mars family, who is now renovating the building into upscale condominiums and office space. Imagine if that building would have been destroyed or razed, and it could have been, could have been very easily because at the time, there was a party looking at it to take it or buy it and to tear it down. But the first thing that, that happened with that was that the owner, Donnie Mars, put a new roof on it, mothballed the areas that he wasn't going to do anything with for a while, and just let it sit. And now he's preserved a building that, that is a beautiful building. I mean, it's probably the most beautiful building in Salona. This is why we have the Salona Historic Preservation Plan, to stop the destruction of historical buildings. St. John's Hospital is listed on the Conservation Designation List of Buildings to be Saved, and, and the list has 250 buildings listed. I'm asking the City Commission, again, to override and deny the Salona Regional Health Center from destroying this historic building, meaning the 1914 building. The building is 100 years old this year, and personally, I am having a hard time trusting what their motives are to ask for a demolition permit and then to negotiate with a potential buyer. With these unanswered questions, I feel like it would be a mistake for the city of Salona to allow Salona Regional Health Center to destroy a piece of our history. You know, there's been, there's been births, you know, in that hospital, thousands of people have been born there, thousands of people have died there, thousands of people have had their lives saved there, and that has a value within itself. And I would suggest that Salona Regional Health Center install a new roof on the flat roof and mothball the building by turning off the electricity, water, or any other items that would cause damage. This way, it could, it would cut their maintenance cost to very little and then put a group together to come up with the use for the property. Salona Regional Health Center said they would build a memorial or a monument for the, excuse me, for the building. But in my mind, there again, my simple mind, the 1914 building is the memorial or the monument. And that's what, all I have to say on, on, from, from that side. I would like to just go through the PowerPoint on, on the buildings that I had put up. Is this it, John? Okay. Here's Slone Candy Company, a good example of a beautiful building that we've torn down over the years. Casa Bonita, that, you know, that was on the same corner.
Same building, yeah.
Same building, yeah. And we tore that down. City Hall, that, to me, is a beautiful building, tore that down. YMCA Building is another building that we took down for a parking lot, which was another nice building. A post office and government building. There again, the architecture on all of these are just, just beautiful. Next one. Lamer Hotel, you know, we took that down, put, you know, parking lots, you know, built a chamber there. You know, that was a, that's, that was a big part of our history over the years, which I don't think should have ever been torn down. The Carnegie Library, you know, that was another, you know, historic, you know, building that should have been preserved. Is that it? No. The Oddfellows Building on the corner of Iron and Seventh Street was, was taken down. And Central School, you know, I'd like to be able to drive by that today. Salona High School, I think, is another remarkable building that we took down over the years. And then there again, the Watson Theater, here's another YMCA picture at night. And the Watson Theater, obviously, is still standing and successful. Sacred Heart Church, you know, there again, I think that should have been preserved. Lincoln Junior High School, it was saved by Pioneer Group, and, and it's, it's successful today. Lee Hardware Company, the building was put on historical register, and the owners installed a new roof to preserve the building. And, you know, that will, once someday, be that way. And there again, the Marymount College Administration Building, the post office, we reused that for, for the Smoky Hill Museum, which is part of us, and this is one that I hope we can do something with also. The Union Station Train Depot, hopefully, we can save that if, if it comes down to it, that somebody can buy it from the railroad. Sacred Heart High School, it's still standing on Iron Street, you know, it's being used by the Catholic Diocese. There again, it's all history. And then we come back to the, to the St. John's Hospital and the chapel. I mean, the chapel's been, been basically gathered, the altar's not in there, the stations of the cross are not in there anymore. And we've just destroyed what I think is, is a part of our history. And we've got, we have things set in place to stop this from happening, and it's up to our City Commission, I feel, to, to look at this hard and ask hard questions from, from the Salona Regional Health Center and to stop the demolition of the 1914 building. And if that can be done, it would be a tremendous asset to our community. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just for clarification, you were, you had addressed a number of things with the leaking roofs and so on, but the part that you're really addressing here is the original 1914 part, not really the part that really has a lot of the damage and...
That's right. That's exactly right, yeah. My biggest, my biggest concern is, is saving the 100-year-old building. And I, I think with our architectural, architects today, that we can put that back to its original. I know we took the front steps off, I, you know, there again, you can do anything, you know, you want to do, it's just having the right, the right buyer and the right developer or the right whatever to make that happen. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I might ask that we take a five-minute break for a restroom break.
I was gonna say a few minutes, yeah.
If that works with everybody, yeah. I'm first.
Fortunately, I've had unwavering confidence.
All back from break, we can go ahead and continue with our public hearing. I was up to the point where I was at public comment on the matter, so we can go ahead and continue with public comment or questions for... I see you coming on up here, come on up.
Hello. I'm Mike Forstall. I own the Lee Buildings 254 and 248 North Santa Fe. I too want to redevelop the Lee Buildings, and I have tried since 2007. Now, my Lee Buildings have new building, new roofs on them, they've been gutted, demoed, and they are ready for development. I have had five of the people that Jack has said, Sunflower, I have had Pioneer Group, I've had those groups in to look at the Lee Building. The Lee Building sits in North Salina. It's what we consider low-income Salina, all right? All these people, along with Cone Earnsey, which is the largest developer in Kansas City, and a gentleman by the name of Jack Mansky, Mansky Development, out of Wichita. And Jack Mansky is developing a, the Wiley Building in Hutchinson right now on the corner of First and Main into 65 affordable housing apartments that are done with low-income housing tax credits. Now, in the state of Kansas, in order to build with low-income housing tax credits, you have to have an approval by your City Commission, a letter issued to the State Office that issues these tax credits, that our city is in approval for it in order to get those. Now, every one of these developers has told me, that building, those buildings, in the shape they're in, I bought those buildings at an auction for $140,000, I have put in over $600,000 in new roofs and demo work. Nobody will buy them for that price because they say it's too expensive. Putting new roofs on, nobody considers what that value is. They don't really care because they can't get that value back. That's not part of a historic designation or historic renovation. But they also don't care because they can't get our city to agree to allow them to build 100% affordable housing in our city. Now, the reason I say that is I had a contract last year from Sunflower Development to build the Lee Building into 120 affordable housings for working families. The gentleman, which is Jason Sword, had told me that he was turned down by our city through the Chamber of Commerce and through Salina Downtown Incorporated, saying that it would be no good to take it to our commission because our city would not approve 100% affordable housing complex in the city of Salina. They would only approve a 60-40 split, 60% affordable, 40% market rent, because they don't want that kind of development in our community. So, I can understand where Mr. Henen Camp is coming from because I now have a building sitting there, well, over $700,000 in 180,000 square feet. And I'm going to be coming to you 10 years from now because I have 15-year warranty roofs that probably won't last, that will probably get water damage because I fixed water damage in those buildings. Now, 10 years from now, I'm not going to fix the roofs because I already know that I lost a $15 million contract, I lost the opportunity. I've talked to half a dozen people that won't come to Salina unless our community changes its mind on affordable housing. Now, I can understand where he's coming from, and I'm coming from the same basis. I sympathize with him. I don't want to put any more money in my building. I glue up aluminum sheets on the windows to keep from replacing them, to keep the pigeons and the bats out. I do very little work. I've had to run out vagrants, I've had kids tear wiring out of buildings, I've shut off all the power on my buildings, I've had to weld down the doors to keep them from prying them up. So, you're getting down to a point of either the city has to get behind, and I know, Mr. Henen Camp has talked to some of those same people, you have to get behind these projects and say, we need to create whatever we can create, that project sits in a low-income area. I can understand where Mr. Mars Project sits up next to the Salona Country Club, up on what we, who've lived here all our lives, call the hill, how he can get the development he can get. But when you have a specific project like this in an area that's in, that's what he can get. And if he's had these developers, I'm sure they ran in the same roadblocks. So, I'm sure I'm going to be coming to you soon as well because I'm not going to be able to market mine. You might say, well, let's market it. I can't market it. I can't market it unless I come to you and say, can I have 100% affordable housing? Because I just lost a $15 million contract, I've just been turned down by six different developers that don't want to develop it unless, that's what happens. So, allow him to do what he needs to do or move out of his way and let him get a developer to do it. So, okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening. I'm Jim Brown. My legal residence is 2785 West State Street Road, meaning that I do live in the county, that I do abide and live in Salina at the current time at 214 South Columbia Avenue. I take care of my 92-year-old mother, who was born in St. John's Hospital, August 16, 1921. I was born there December 15, 1952. And so, those have some sort of historical and significant aspects in why I'm asking you to please try and rescind the Heritage Commission's request to destroy St. John's Hospital. I, along with Jim Raven Camp, would like to see the 1914 and perhaps even extend it to 1951 part of the St. John's Hospital maintained and restored to the present, to the condition that it once was. I'm not so much interested into the keeping the 1951 and further developments around that hospital. As you can see by the pictures that he showed on the PowerPoints this afternoon and this evening, those are the areas that were most significantly damaged by water intrusion, and we have seen time and time again that flat roofs in Salina, in Kansas, just do not withhold or do not withstand the powers and of Mother Nature. Eventually, over time, flat roofs will leak in Salina, in the state of Kansas. So I do ask that you try and rescind and think about rescinding the Heritage Commission, and I'm surprised that Mr. Henen Camp doesn't try to work a little bit harder in trying to maintain a... to maintain a heritage and a historical part of the view of the St. John's Hospital as some of his own history is part of that building. Some of his ancestors contributed substantially to the building of that 1914 hospital. So, I do ask that you try and rescind the Heritage Commission's order to demolish the building. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's probably fair to say that you're really a spokesperson. I mean, although your feelings may be in line, I just, oops, don't mind me up here just flipping things around. But I just, I want to point out that it may not be up your decision, his decision alone. I mean, obviously, he's a hired spokesperson through the hospital. What's that?
He only works there.
He only works there, right. I mean, again, it may be his ideas. I just wouldn't want us to unfairly paint him as the villain of St. John's Hospital, so...
Commissioners, I'm Donnie Mars. My name and family's been batted around as owning the most beautiful building in Salina. And I believe that, although Commissioner Hardy thinks his house is the most beautiful building in town. We 21 years in St. Patrick's Day that our family took on the challenge of saving the Marymount College Administration Building. First thing we had to do was fix the roofs. We had to keep the water out. The area of the building that we're restoring right now hasn't had heat or any kind of conditioning in it since the college, since the early part of 1993. We were able to preserve that because we understand what terrorists and destroys buildings. It's water intrusion, very gradually over time. On July 22, 2013, you five members approved the ordinance for the property maintenance code, which it was very disturbing to me to see all of the water damage and all the things that were going on because the property maintenance code that we have should protect that. But you can't see that inside. You have a decision to make for all of the rest of Salina. Does that building remain or does it go? You have to decide that. Once it's gone, it's gone. Never will come back. So, I would urge you to take that very seriously and consider rescinding the Heritage Commission's vote. You also have the fourth option Mr. Andrews didn't point out. You could table this indefinitely if you so chose. Your legal counsel couldn't tell you what that means.
Thank you.
Mayor Shirley, Commissioners, Kent Buer, Chairman of the Board of Trustees, Salina Regional Health Center. We have done our due diligence. Jack does care about architecture and history. We all do. To us, it comes down to economics. Our job is to use the assets of Salina Regional Health Center to take care of patients and employ people in this community. I think Mr. Forstall said it very well as far as the economics part of it, comparing that to the Lee Buildings. We've looked at several options. We've tried to sell the building. $700,000 to keep the roof on is a lot of money. It's a lot of money to us, and that does not make financial sense to us. So, we sure hope you support. The Heritage Commission vote was 6-0. Board of Trustees' vote was unanimous, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Larry Penkratz, 125 South Presley. I had ran the Salina Housing Authority for the last five years, and through that, we owned 162 housing units and 125 of those houses. So, we are looking for a complex to go into. So, I've visited the St. John's Complex many times trying to figure that out, worked with the Pioneer Property Group, worked with Overland Properties Group. And I think we have to remember, when you go to a hospital, what do you see? Hospital rooms. And that's the challenge of that building is its small rooms. Pioneer Property Group in Topeka had redone the Santa Fe Hospital, and they said it will take them 20, 30 years to ever get anything of their money back from redoing that. I've been around Salina since '87. As soon as it was announced that it was going to merge the two hospitals, there was a lot of committees put together. We looked at its service agencies going into that building. Even when I was looking for the housing and for offices, we tried putting numbers together, and it just didn't work. So, I think really the concern I'd have now is the building's in shape. It needs to be tore down. If you've seen what the Salina Regional Hospital has done in the past on tearing facilities down, I had the Salina Housing Authority offices directly to the south of it. There's a lot of houses there. They are tore down. They are cleaned up properly. You know, you can drive vehicles over there, and there's not nails. My concern is whoever would end up with it, if it's not demolished, what kind of condition that's going to be. I also think the other thing is, if you look at the hospital, has put several million dollars of economic development back into that neighborhood already. And I expect they'd like to be good partners, and they'll continue to do that. So, I'd support tearing the facility down. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Okay. I did want to address one factor that has been brought up on a couple of points, and I wanted to make it clear what the interpretation is. The staff has given you, and I think in the blue sheet, three options. There's a discussion about this fourth option, and I wanted to make clear why that was not included and the opinion that that is not available to you. And specifically, that is part of the city code that allows for a one-year waiting period, essentially, to do bona fide preservation efforts. The specific part of the code says that the Heritage Commission may deny the certificate of appropriateness or defer a decision for relocation or demolition for up to one year. There is no provision in the city code that says this commission has that power. Because it's written in that way, and in a section of the code, a separate section of the code dealing with the Heritage Commission, it's my interpretation that this does not allow this commission to use that provision and that the options that the city has are outlined in the staff's middle. And if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, would that mean that the Heritage Commission could, that their decision to deny it for one year, is that they only have the authority to delay it for one year? Or...
Yes. They have the authority in their decision to do this subsection that allows them to defer it for one year for the preservation efforts. They did not decide to allow that. That could be done and appealed in the same way as this was. They made a decision that it should be, the application should be allowed. So, them not deciding that means that this body does not have the ability to address that specifically at this point.
So, their decision could have been to deny the application just on its face without any sort of one year in perpetuity, if that were the wish?
Yes. They had essentially three choices: do what they did, which was approve it, deny it directly, or do this one-year effort. And I just wanted to make it clear that I don't believe that this commission has the ability to impose that condition when they didn't decide to do that.
Right. We could send it back to them with our recommendation. We don't necessarily have the power. That could be an option.
Well, I believe that in this instance, you could direct them to clarify their ruling. I do not believe that you could tell them to rule in a certain way.
Sure, we can.
Well, not here.
No, I know what you mean. So, that really isn't an option to send it back. I know on some of the things with planning commission, we can take it back and say, "We found these facts of finding," and on and on. Not the case in this one.
And I think that if you were to say, "Find different facts that you believe that the Heritage Commission didn't find through some investigation or through this process, and you believe that those should be reconsidered," that may be a different prospect, but you can't make a decision for them.
Commissioners, real quick, too, it was before you, I think you're probably a little ways away from throwing out motions, but just in case. There was one, I guess, recommendation as an option would be the to table indefinitely. I just want to kind of make sure you're clear on that, and I'll defer to Mr. Luckman if he thinks I'm off-base with this. But I think what was really meant was to postpone indefinitely because to table means you put something on the table which you intend to bring back off the table before the end of your meeting. To postpone is when you carry out to usually a particular date and time. If you postpone indefinitely, in essence, kills an item that you have in front of you. So, if you took the action based on an appeal to postpone indefinitely and that action carried, you would, in essence, be killing that item. I'm not exactly sure in an appeal how that would play, but that's why I defer to Mr. Luckman. But I presume it would take you out of it, and the ruling of the Heritage Commission would stand. But I would ask Mr. Luckman to...
Yeah. Well, I believe if you took no action on the appeal, that in essence, I think my interpretation would be that that's a denial, essentially, of the permit because there isn't any action supporting it in the appeal process. There isn't an affirmation of it. And without that affirmation, it really stands in limbo, which I believe in this instance would be tantamount, and they would probably be correct in saying legally that it was a denial. And I would say that I think the tabling it indefinitely at this point or doing that would be problematic in that regard. I think it's inherent in your position that the applicant be provided due process, which is a hearing in a timely manner, which this certainly is, and the appealing party has that as well, and then a reasonable decision.
Thank you.
This is my reserved that I requested. I too was born at Salina Regional Health Center-St. John's in 1951. It's true that the Henen Camps were one of the founding donors. The name is on the plaque in the front of the building, one of the marble plaques. $1,000. That's big money in 1912, when they probably sent that money forward. So, this is not an easy process. It's a personally painful one to go through this. But nevertheless, I work for Salina Regional Health Center, and this is the best decision for Salina Regional Health Center that's been 100% approved by the Board of Trustees. The cost to maintain the building this last year was $80,000. We don't expect that to change much. We also don't expect to continue to work to maintain the building at those kind of costs. There are only so many health care dollars, and with the changes coming up with the health care that is changing nationally, there's going to be fewer dollars. And putting them into buildings that cannot be used by Salina Regional Health Center makes no sense for use of that money. One thing I might point out, and I think this is an option available to us, Mr. Mars pointed out that he had gotten the building, Marymount College. One of the things, it was a freestanding building by itself. It didn't have many appurtenances attached to it over the 60 or 70 years, which is typical for hospitals. But nevertheless, that building belonged to, I believe, the Salina Diocese. It wasn't the Salina Diocese that did that work. It was Donnie Mars. We are very willing, I hope I'm not speaking out of hand for the Board of Trustees, but to sell this building. And if there's somebody out there that can develop, that's why we're working with KW. I did not understand Jim Raven Camp's being incensed over the fact that we are looking at demolition and asking that that not be rescinded, which has been approved by the Heritage Commission, but that we are continuing to work with somebody as a last-minute, last-ditch effort. And they say if all things fall into place, they can make it work. But all it takes is one of those things falling out of place, and they could not make the building work. And we have had many people that have been through there that have come in optimistically. The names have been said many times. They ended up not being able to make the building work. I'm not sure of the last conversation that Jim had with Pioneer, but the city has expressed what Pioneer told them, and I told you, and it's in a letter here, that they said, "If we would tear the building down, or if we would sell it to them for a dollar, they would tear the building down, and they would develop it as low-income housing in that area, as single-family dwellings." So, our intent is not to put more and more money. We've put many, many dollars in that building since 1995 as we tried to make an outpatient center and an inpatient center and a variety of other things. But if there's somebody out there, if the city of Salina itself would say, "You know, we would like to mothball that building," as been indicated, was done with the Stiefel Theater, we would be very willing to talk with them and allow them to do that. So, if there are ideas that will put the building back into useful service, we're willing to explore those. But we feel we've explored them to the extent we can, which has led us to request that the demolition be ratified, understanding that we've got one last-ditch effort work with KW, and if they can make it work, we will work with them as well as we can. But if that does not come out, we would ask and expect we could go ahead to the demolition without reappearance or reaplication. Thank you. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to respond to those.
Do we have any more questions?
I have a question. I'm sorry. It's for Dean Andrew, I think.
Okay.
But thank you for your time and effort there. I wondered if there's a required time between the time the permit is issued and the time demolition has to occur.
In the case of a building permit, that is, you obtain a building permit, you've got to act on that within 180 days or the permit expires. I'm not absolutely sure that that's the case with the demolition permit, but that is what the building code states, that if I come in, I apply for a permit, that permit's issued to me, and I don't do any work under that permit within 180 days, the permit will expire.
So, possibly then it's 180 days from the time that we would make the decision to, if we upheld their Heritage Commission's...
What we have is an application for demolition permit that's been filed by Salina Regional Health Center to demolish this hospital building, and that permit cannot be issued by staff until and unless the city commission says so. And so, until there's a final decision by you that is reached, that would not result in any action on their permit application.
Thank you, Dean.
I have a number of kind of questions and concerns and so on with this. And first of all, I'd just like to say to Dean and John that the packet they put together for us on this appeal part was, I thought, extremely helpful to me. I think it contains a lot of background information. But in particular, we have laid out here the seven particular conditions that were the factors or the findings from the Heritage Commission. And in going through all of these very detail, with an eye to detail, and also, I'll just point out also that I did review the video from the Heritage Commission meeting as well. And probably, you know, I have so many questions on this and some concerns, not just about the demolition, what the demolition of this particular building or parts of this building in particular mean, but just from an overall standpoint of why we have a Heritage Commission, how it's part, not just part of, you know, having that preservation plan, but how it's really a part of kind of a cultural plan that we have. I mean, we're, everywhere I go, people talk about how great the arts are in Salina and how everybody wishes our art, their art department or their art component of their city was like ours. And in the same breath, I hear, being, I'm a Kansas State graduate from the School of Architecture and Design, so these, and a former member of the Heritage Commission. So, these things are kind of, I'm sensitive towards these things. You know, I hear also, though, how Salina just does not preserve our old buildings and our heritage, and we just do a really bad job of that overall. So, it's one of the things that concerns me is that we get it right. And I appreciate that there's so much detail in this. I think we have a lot of questions. I don't know where this is going to come out, but I think it's important that we have a detailed conversation about this, we get as much information as we can on this because I don't know how many buildings in Salina are, have the architectural interest and significance that St. John's Hospital building does. If you went down and rated the existing buildings we have left, where that might rank. But I think it's still, with the additions on to it, still ranked pretty high. So, I don't want to go through all these seven because it would just take way too much time. But in particular, the, I think with the threat to human, to the health, I don't think that that really exists, and the Heritage Commission said that that did. The other, another big one with me is the zoning being a consideration. I think that for a 100-year-old building that is as nice as it is, we've rezoned properties for much less, for less reasons than that before. for much less, for less reasons than that before. I do think that as far as the neglect, I think that there has been neglect on part of the building, but it really doesn't affect the part of the building that I believe has the architectural significance to it. So, I mean, that's kind of a push there, because I think that probably, without being in the building and looking, it sounds like the areas that are in the 1914 structure are probably the least of the damages in those areas. I was a bit surprised that it was, that it only comprised 20% of the building. I figured it was much more, but the 33% total with the 1951 is probably why I think the eye goes to that being architecturally similar and all part of that same building. As far as the, in the overall, I think kind of what I'm concerned about by saying that, yeah, this doesn't fit within, it's not architecturally significant, which was number two on there, I think it is, and by saying that, well, it just costs too much to do these type of things, kind of indicating economic hardship, I think it's going to be really hard for us moving forward with anybody that comes before us with this type of issue, to tell them, I can see their sort of response being, well, this isn't as significant as architecturally as the St. John's Building was, and you let them tear down that. And also to say, I don't have the funds to do anything with this, because I think probably if anybody has any funds to kind of help contribute towards a repurposing or reuse of this area, I think the hospital would probably in Salina be probably financially able to do that more than anybody else. So those are some of the concerns that I have. I also don't, as far as seeing detailed marketing and detailed possibilities for redevelopment and so on, I just, I just haven't seen enough detail in what we've been provided to feel confident that it was looking at something other than the entire 170,000 square feet and not just that historical portion.
Commissioners, this might be a good opportunity to make sure that you're aware of things you can, information you can ask for. When Commissioner Blanchard mentioned not, you know, maybe seeing the detail, you have the ability, based on those criteria that you're judging this against in your ordinance, to require information of the applicant if you don't feel that you have enough information to make a decision. An example might be if there's an assertion about a cost to do something, you could require that they, you know, could show you that, the source of that cost, if you felt that that was necessary. You don't have to do that. I guess with that said, if you do feel in your decision making that there's a piece of information that's directly related to an aspect that you're deciding on from the code that you need and has not been provided, you have the opportunity to discuss whether or not you'd want to see that, have that provided to you before you make a decision as well. So just want to throw that out there, just so you're aware of it.
Thank you, Jason.
If I could ask maybe Mr. Henen Camp, the KW submittal and sort of the, if one thing hiccups on this thing, kind of one of the things here, and I don't, I'm not going to beat you over the head with this thing, because I really appreciate the, sort of the last minute, well, maybe there's something we can do, so this isn't geared towards that. But I would just think that if there's, if that could be sort of directed more into a detailed effort that is, so that people, we don't get the impression that it's just, well, it's just, we'll say we'll go through these hoops, and then when they say there's one thing, and then that kind of puts the kibosh on everything, it just kind of, it seems to me that if we have an opportunity to really pursue something that might save this community asset, that would you be at all willing to say, if you pursue that process and they come back, that that extra step of coming in for the demolition at that time would be, you'd be willing to do that? Because, I mean, that would be something that I would, you know, the only thing I'm uncomfortable with that is just to say, well, then at any point arbitrarily, it could be done. And I'm not quite sure, how long is the process of getting the demolition permit in place?
Two hours. At the point we make the decision, the demolition permit's the easy part. But having said that, the 180-day timeframe is accurate. We have plenty of instances where circumstances have been such that we've extended the 180 days, given the circumstances. But the actual demolition permit issuance is not difficult pending this decision.
Yeah, just to add to that, Commissioners, in this particular case, because at least on the north side, the building's very close to the sidewalk and the roadway, one of the things that we would take a little bit of time, and they already would presume it, would probably provide the plan though, would be to make sure that whatever the logistic was for the demolition, that we can protect those areas. And that, I mean, when you tear down buildings, you know how to do that. So assuming that plan was submitted, it would still go through pretty quickly.
Right. The application has been filed, of course. I mean, that's what leads to coming to the Heritage Commission. So the application is filed and in, and this is the consideration for it. As far as, Mr. Blanchard, your thought on, let me say, first of all, we have, in our own interest, a desire to have KW Comprize succeed, despite the fact that many of you, or at least some of you, expressed doubts that we've done due diligence. I believe strongly that we have over time, but like anything else, after a while, after 10 years of trying to find out if there's ways to do that, if you can share the building, if you can, you know, get not-for-profit so you don't lose your tax exemption, you know, and over time, and then as you vacate the building and you try other things and bring others in, like Landmark and Pioneer and those, and those don't work, you begin to see the writing on the wall and realize what your next steps need to be. But from our perspective, the cost for us, based on preliminary proposals that are not, I mean, they're not proposals off of a demolition specification, but folks we've had come up, we've had the asbestos reviewed there on that, I mean, we're looking at a million and a half dollars. Well, for us, for KW Comprize, if they could succeed, we would save ourselves a million and a half dollars, and why wouldn't we want to do that? I mean, that is big money for us, and if they would develop the building and it'd be successful, that would be great. What we don't want to end up with is, okay, now, you can't do anything, you've spent another several months, and the outcome is the same as the prior outcomes, and now you've got to start the process over again and be second-guessed by possibly new Heritage Commission members and new City Commission members, and go through that process in perpetuity, which we have no interest in doing. Salina Regional Health Center had lobbied not to have that building on, knowing that in the nature of healthcare, that that might not be in there. Plus, all the buildings we've talked about today are freestanding buildings virtually. I mean, Roosevelt Lincoln was probably the only one, and it had a connection in between the two. This is not that type of building. We're talking about very significant costs to, which, I'll let the Board of Trustees speak to that, but in my opinion, is not going to happen, that we're not going to do that. We're not going to put that, we're not going to put multiple millions of dollars in there to bring that building back. Now, when it comes to KW, I mean, one of their first steps, that is, they've got to give TIF funding or a process through Salina. That has to be approved, and if that's the first step, if that doesn't happen, then they said it's over with for us. So City of Salina is very, it's very contingent on the Senate of Salina to participate in that, to save that building. And the question for Salina and Salina community is, is that where they want to put the money, if it's contingent on funds? I'm no expert and know very little about TIF funding. I know there's some different aspects of it to get looked into, but KW Comprize, they said that's the first thing that would come into play for us. If we can make that happen, then we can get into the Heritage Grants and the low-income housing tax exemption, so, or tax credits, rather. So I don't know if that's answered your question, but those were, tried to get two or three of those things.
Yeah, I appreciate that. One of the things that I'm curious about, and that is, is that you don't have any specific plans drawn up for these properties when they're done. Generally speaking, do you have a, conceptually, something that you're looking at, and would those plans work at all on that property and those properties with just the 1914 portion of the building remaining? I mean, in other words, could you develop the other parts of that property in a way that that building might then be a complement to?
That would be, I think it's a good question. It'd be somewhat forecasting the future. Without a specific development, it's hard to say. My answer, and not just because of what the appeal process is, is no, probably not. One thing, is we looked at that for, with Via Christi, who has many, many long-term adult care centers. I mean, that's their business, they're good at it. I worked with Bob Harvey, who was the, he was the president of that particular division, and we were with Salina Regional Health Center, and we looked very hard and diligently at maybe making that a location. Without it was a hospital, you know, maybe it could work into that. The outcome, he said, I can build buildings cheaper than I can renovate that building that you have. He said, it's far too costly, we cannot operate economically as a result of that. We had to stop pursuing that, because that was their business. They were good at it. They know what they do in Wichita and other places all the time. They said, we cannot make that building work economically for us. We can build one cheaper, we can operate it less expensively. So we don't have a specific plan, but we didn't have a specific plan when the Donna Vanir Children's Center went up. We didn't have a specific plan when the, in the parking lot where we had the Disaster Recovery Center. But nevertheless, those are the type of properties we've developed, along with those at Salina Regional Health Center, the main campus. So our intent is when a healthcare need arises, and that was appropriate for us, that's where we would pursue a location for that.
Well, and I will say this, that the properties that you have developed, architecturally, not a big fan of the Data Recovery Center, but the Donna Cave Vanir Center, everything you've done, the Blood Platelet Center down, that the building was removed on Prescott, and so on, the camp, the main campus and everything. I think everything has done well, and it seems to me that Salina Regional's always been a good community partner. And I think the city's also been a really good partner in that, as far as, you know, helping to make things like that Blood Platelet Center work. Have, you know, the, I hope the new 41 new lights along the street are an enhancement too, but that's also another thing that, you know, we, I think, at least me personally, I think that Salina Regional's a big part of our overall strategic plan moving forward. We talk about job creation and good, high-quality jobs, and how do we attract those types of positions, and how do we make it, make our community attractive to the people that would want to come work at Salina Regional? I think that's why things like, that people are so passionate about, things like our arts programs and a river project and downtown revitalization and other things like that, that we recognize that these types of things and historic preservation are the types of things that really give that cultural value that people really are looking for in a community that they're going to relocate to. So, you know, hopefully this whole thing isn't about, you know, I think Salina Regional's one of the best partners we have. And so this isn't about thinking that you're not doing the right thing and so on, it's just about, at least I, the thing that I struggle with is that we're, we're going to tear down a building that we will never rebuild anything that looks anything like that. And when you start putting costs on what it costs to, when you say the cost to tear it down and build it up new is cheaper, well, it is, but if you built, tore that down and tried to rebuild it to look as good as it does now, they'd never be able to afford to rebuild that. And so when we're tearing down apples and putting up oranges, it's, that's kind of what we're, you know, sometimes that we need to try and balance. I don't know what the answer to that is. All I know is whenever we talk about redevelopment in Salina, we keep getting told from everybody, whether it's commercial or residential or whatever, that we don't do redevelopment in Salina. We don't have the contractors that can do it, we don't have the expertise and all that. So maybe a good thing that can come out of this is that we need to start realizing that we need to get ahead of that curve, and so that in 1997, we could have been working on a plan to save St. John's Hospital, instead of now, when it's way too late, we're doing this. So I don't know what the answer is. I'd love to save that building. I would hope that 180 days would be enough time to really make us feel like we have done absolutely everything we could possibly do to find something. And so my appeal to you would be, in this appeal process, would be.
You're appealing the appeal.
Yeah. Would be, does 180 days, and to your Board of Trustees, does 180 days in the whole big scheme of things really damage St. John's Regional Hospital? And is it possible to have 180 days to, if nobody does anything, then I'll be the first one to stand up and say, yeah, let's move forward. But.
Well, we've initiated essentially the process at this point in time by having KW Comprize. I mean, we've actively engaged in them. They want to know when the meeting was. I said, it's today. I said, I'm going to ask that the decision be upheld for demolition, but I said, we want to continue to actively engage you to see if you can make your plan work, which is a different plan than they had on December 4th. We were going to have to, we had a $20 million risk on it, we said, we're not going to do that. They said, okay, for the right price of the building, we will assume that risk and we'll develop. But there are a number of points along the way. And so I'm trying to answer your question, but saying, you know, in 90 days, that could be, it won't work. Or it could be in 90 days, they say, hey, we got what we needed from the City of Salina, we got the commitment, we got the TIF, whether grant money or funding or just approval, whatever that process is, we're going to go to the next step. And my understanding from Board of Trustees is we will continue down that path. The sale isn't immediately to them. The sale is when they have done all the steps, they say, okay, we've got everything in a row, then the sale takes place. And like I said, we're actively interested in pursuing that, because there's a big savings to us. We don't have to spend a million and a half dollars to demolish that building, and we will use that money to purchase land someplace else that may benefit. So from our end, this is kind of a last ditch thing that we've come to, but nevertheless, we felt we have explored many alternatives, whether people in this room feel that way or not, and those have not come to fruition. This, I mean, truly, we could have told them no, said, no, we've been through it too many times, we've seen too many failures, we're not going to. Our Board of Trustees wants to do the right thing for Salina. What they don't want to have happen is this, we sell the building to somebody, we can't do what we need to do. We can't get it done, we're not going to continue to spend money on the building. There are people that will buy that building. I guarantee you, we can find a buyer for the building. I don't know, and if it's the best interest of Salina, that would be great, but I don't know that'll be the case. Here's a scenario I can see very easily, we sell the building to somebody, they go in, they rip out $150,000, $200,000 with the copper pipe, things like that, they leave the building set, it goes on the tax rolls, because it's a taxable entity, they don't pay the taxes, it falls into, in a worse situation than we're at as of today. I mean, that's a real legitimate concern to our Board of Trustees, to try to make that not happen, but I think, and they're here, and anybody want to come up and reiterate that, but I think Kent did that, they made a unanimous decision, and they're making a last ditch effort to say, if we can make that, make that happen, so.
What is the connection between the 1914 building and the later additions like right now?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I had Jeff Christ, I think I mentioned earlier, take a look at it. He said it would be possible, without any detail, that it would be possible to tear down the surrounding buildings and still have the 1914 building standing. But he said it would be very, very expensive, and Jeff doesn't know that from a detailed analysis study, and, I mean, I think we're reluctant to spend several tens of thousands of dollars to even get that. If somebody else wants to do that, I think we'd be glad to help them, provide the plans, show them what they needed. But I don't know myself how all the connections were made. The 51 building, the 1914 building, pretty straightforward. Some of the others, they took a lot of materials off to make those connections. Anything is possible, as I think Jim Raven Camp said, all it takes is the financial wherewithal, and I'm not, cannot suggest a course of action that would significantly adverse effect Salina Regional Health Center or lead to a bankruptcy or that sort of thing, that can happen when you dabble in old buildings at times.
Would you agree that the 1914 building is in better shape than the later additions?
I would not. The 1914 building, from the type of structure, we've had some concrete on the floors, it deteriorated over time. I mean, we've replaced some of that, it continues to happen. It is a frame construction, it's got about a three-foot foundation, you know, at the base, and it builds up. Interior walls are supporting walls. When you take the 1951 building, the 1971 building, and some of the others, the column pan grid construction they put in there is very durable construction. Now, that said, I'm not a structural engineer, I'm not an architect, I don't have any qualification in that direction, but if you took it down, would the Penn Building stay up for another 100 years? I don't know. I mean, it might with proper maintenance. You see buildings in Europe and other places. So I'm, and we have stipulated, we're not. So, I'm, and we have stipulated, we're not saying that it can't be preserved, we're just simply saying, we have explored many alternatives, have not been able to come up with an economically way, economical way of making that happen, or anybody that wants it in that fashion. Once again, if the city of Salina said, "You know, we were successful in the Stiefel Theater, we'd like to have that building, and, and we know it can be turned into something," I think we'd be very glad to listen to that and give them a great deal.
When you absorbed the campus with the merger-
Yes.
Was the intent that that campus would continue into perpetuity as a hospital?
Well, I think it's a, is a good question. I don't think the intent was into perpetuity, because nobody knows. Quite frankly, in 1996, when we consolidated, there was a very serious thought, it didn't come to fruition, of building, abandoning both buildings and building, you know, in a new location out south of town because of what we had. It's more than you want to hear, but there was a complex environment and healthcare at that point in time. You had HCA buying hospitals upcoming into communities, and then, of course, ultimately, as you know, they ran into a lot of trouble from their tactics. But at that particular point in time, our determination was, "Gee, we're not going to abandon a hospital, have somebody come up and give cut-rate care and service while we're out there in a nice new building." So, the determination was to continue, have pin campuses and outpatient campus, and the, the main campus is the inpatient campus. What happened over time, though, is, one example, surgeons. I mean, they didn't want to go over and do a couple of outpatient surgeries over at the pin camps, then drive a mile over and do an inpatient surgery, and then drive back and do another one. So, what looked like a great idea did not pan out, and of course, as you began to pull services away from that, you know, the, the building got less and less. We tried it for kind of our longer-term care, our skilled nursing unit and our rehab facility. That did not work out very well, because reimbursement changed for those, we couldn't make them economically work. I mean, they just wouldn't work, there wasn't reimbursement there. So, we had no choice. But as those downsized, either eliminate the program or downsize it. But every time you do that, and you take a big chunk of function out of the building, it makes it harder to continue to pay for the building. So, that was the idea, it's not one that came to fruition as people thought it might in 1995.
A couple of questions for staff. First, is relating to the KW arrangement, what would something like that look like? I mean, do we, are we able to make a partial, what seems like a partial decision here?
Yeah, commissioners, I, again, I defer to Mr. Loggins, if I speak out of turn, but, I mean, your job today is to either ratify the, or deny the appeal. If, if you're talking about like a contingency option, can we, I'm not sure you're in a position, I think the only tool that you could use to form a contingency option is, unless the ordinance restricts you, and I don't believe it does, is to postpone the item, the consideration of the item for that 180 days or what have you, so that the, it's still alive, you set the date, it's way out there, presuming it wouldn't be interpreted to in any way violate due process, it's a long time, which would provide an opportunity for that to happen or not happen, and then it comes back to you. That's about the only tool I'm aware of, and again, I defer to Mr. Loggins.
And that would be, that would be like number, option number three, right?
Correct.
Right.
Well, I probably would step in there and say, "I don't necessarily agree with that assessment," only in the sense that I think this commission can ask, I think, a specific question or information that it believes it does not have to make a decision, meaning, just what was stated here, you know, if you wanted to figure out what exactly KW was saying, or that you wanted to, you know, have a structural engineer look at something, or have, and I think in that regard, is probably have, one of the parties who said information here that they had somebody look at it to say, you know, "Did you get a report, can you get that to us?" Or, "Would he be willing to do a statement that said what he's, you know, what he's talking about?" That kind of thing. I really hesitate to say that you could make a condition on the permit at this point to say something that, you know, it's only approved if this happens. I think that's the, the, the party bringing the application has the right at this point to, if they want to explore that, they can certainly withdraw it without prejudice to bring it back up. But it sounds to me like the statements are that they want to pursue this, and they will, if you approve it, they will try to make that happen, and if it doesn't, they will proceed. But it's within their discretion to do that. So, I have a real problem, and don't know how you would phrase it such that you could say, sometime, you know, you have to exploit this completely and reach some benchmark, and then if you reach that magic benchmark, then it's approved. I think you approve it, and that's, approve it or deny it, or say, "We want KW to come in and talk to us," or something like that, or, "Give us a report."
Okay. And, for staff, what, as far as what sort of timeframe would be an appropriate timeframe if that were to be pursued, that you think would be adequate to be able to determine whether there's a real project there or not? The thing that concerns me about that is contingent upon, it almost seems like then sort of the commission or the city has a gun held at its head saying, "Approve all of this, or we're going to tell Salina Regional, we can't do the deal." So, it almost creates a situation where we're, if that is the case, to where it's like, "Do it, and then until they say it doesn't, until the city breaks down," or whatever, it just seems like we're putting ourselves in a position to be forced to do things to kind of keep things going.
I can, I'll speak outside of the logistic of this, and just speak about a development project, which could come to you. First of all, what would happen is, is we would typically be looking at a general concept of the, of the development project, just a narrative description, maybe some, some, you know, renderings, cost estimates, thing like, things like that. At some point, we would have, it depends what incentive is requested to, say it's a tax increment finance district. In that particular case, you have to look at existing property value versus what you think would be the projected, or property value at the time that the project is completed. Sometimes you're right, sometimes you're wrong on that. But in that case, you're trying to estimate a margin of taxes that would be generated from an increase in property value that could go back into the project. Now, again, there's a lot of factors. If it's, if the TIF is a pay-as-you-go, it's a lot easier than if it's, if they're asking for bonds, and you're dealing with all the risks of bonds in a project. So, what that, what the, and the TIF has its own, for those, I'm not sure if any of you were involved with the COES. In the COES TIF, what we experienced, there were multiple statutory timeframes. And so, that's a, that was a probably 90, 120-day project, if it, if we already had all the information, we could move forward with that. So, depending on the questions, depending on the clarity of the information, and the picture, and the time it took for you, then look at that and put that into a framework. If it's a tax increment finance district, I would say you're probably talking about four to six months. And that's if things continue to flow. If you're not talking about a TIF, it's a, I don't know what a simpler incentive would be in this particular case, but if you don't have to hit those statutory timelines, it's a different type of an incentive, it could run a little faster than that, it'd be more to how quickly they could put together the scope. Now, the other thing is, is in this particular case, you'd want them to have some form of a purchase agreement in place with the hospital as well, and that's kind of the last phase of their part. You probably wouldn't want to obligate if you didn't think that was going to happen either. So, that does take time as well. So, I, you know, I don't know. All process is probably, I don't know if you could really have something together realistically in four months, but I'd say four to, four to six months, maybe four to eight months.
If I could add to that, the one variable that jumps out at me is just the due diligence process on their part. That timeline's going to be set by them and dependent on their level of comfort in terms of gathering the level of detail they need and preparing the cost estimates. The TIF process is responsive to those numbers once they've kind of solidified them.
Do we know who, oh, I'm sorry, were you continuing? Do we, are we familiar, I don't even know who this KW, you may have said earlier, Jack, who they are. I mean, obviously, our decisions need to be, need to be based on, if it were anybody, but I guess, right off the top, I want to see if there's even remotely an ability to succeed. Do they, have they done other projects, have they done, I don't know who they are.
I'm trying to remember the first name, I think it's Williams, they're a real estate company, I think they've done business here in Salina. They're a commercial group of them, yeah.
Oh, okay, K, okay, so it's a Keller Williams division.
Keller Williams is a real estate-
Well, they're a real estate, but they're-
Keller Williams Commercial.
Commercial.
And then Comprize is a group that they're working with, who has stated they have successfully done these type of things, but for themselves. They're not necessarily a company that is, I mean, when we say closely held, as I understood, and there may be others here that have worked with them on some other issues that can answer better than I can, we'll be glad to let them do that. But as I understand from our last conversation with them, somewhat closely held, because I asked for references, and they said, "Well, we're our own reference, because we've developed them and retained them," you know, "for income, apparently." So, and then KW is, is, I think, simply an agent working with them, because they've indicated that Comprize would be doing more of the, more of the work, so.
So, Keller Williams is simply the agent of the, of the project?
Anything to add to that?
Is that, is that the local broker?
No, they're out of Kansas City.
Okay.
I could tell you, that would have probably been a no. Yeah.
If, if you're considering allowing it, and that he is to build this into low-income housing, using affordable tax credits or low-income housing tax credits, those are available, but you have to apply in February. And just like Jason said, you're going to have to have all your plans, all your documentation, and then you could go through an approval process and an acceptance process. And those people do not know whether they're accepted or whether they get those tax credits till July. So, it's a six-month process. So, they have to apply in February.
Thank you for that information. I guess for me, it kind of hits on all the cylinders. I don't know if it's six cylinders, four cylinders, or eight, or what, but I mean, it's, it's, I look at these old pictures, and it's an attractive building, I think, "Oh, wouldn't it be great if?" And then I look at, of course, the presentation that Mr. Raven Camp did, and I see all the old buildings that have gone away, and I think, "Oh, those were really cool. Wouldn't those have been, you know, Salina'd be so much better if they were, if they were there?" And, and I start wrestling with, "Well, if they tore down part of the building, they had this." And, and of course, you know, it's, it's north Salina, in a sense. I mean, like I said, it's redevelopment, it's maintaining our historic structures, all things that I've sort of, in a sense, campaigned on. And then, I think Mr. Marr's also brought up the minimum maintenance code, which is a very important thing to me, that how can I sit here and tell the citizens of Salina, "You've got to maintain your property," but then in a sense, I'm not saying that, I don't necessarily think that there was will for neglect. I think the hospital made some, some effort. I don't think it made all the effort that it could, but I also understand the financial burden of that, too. Putting $700,000 on a building that potentially is never going to be used is probably stupid. But I think that, that some effort was made there. But, but on the other hand, I look at things like the $700,000, and I think, "If this were mine, or I had unlimited funds, or whatever else, what would I do?" And, and I don't think that I would have necessarily acted any different than, than the hospital did. Yeah, I'd love to see if you and Keller Williams can get this thing, and this development, Compride, or whatever they're called, could get it together, it'd be fantastic. I don't think we have buildings like this in Salina. But I think, I kind of tend to go a little bit with, more with where John was on the sense of, had, maybe if this was something we'd been working on in 97, if nothing else, this may serve as a reason for us to take our, our maintaining our rigid standards a little more seriously. I feel like maybe unfortunately, we may have gotten to a point with this building where it is too far to try and save it. If, if somebody can come at the last minute, fantastic. That's, that's great. I'm not saying I wouldn't love to see it, that's my first choice. But I think that we, we haven't been as hard on our historic structures as we need to be, we haven't been as regimented, and we haven't put those sort of things in place. And all of a sudden, we get unfortunately, probably one of the more architecturally significant buildings in Salina, whether that's good, bad, or indifferent, and we have to make a decision on it. But we're kind of asking you to look back 10 years ago and say, "Why didn't you do this?" And, and in a sense, why weren't we maybe more rigid on it? So, I feel, I definitely, the historic side of me says, "I want to see you maintain it, I want to see you make every effort that you can." But the realistic side of me, which unfortunately, and I agree with John again, if you had to build this building today, you couldn't afford it. Well, but on the other hand, the buildings you guys have put up in other locations aren't unarchitectural. I would say your platelet center over there is probably one of the nicest-looking houses, or, I say houses, because it looks like a house, one of the nicest-looking structures in the neighborhood. So, it's hard, like I said, it puts me in a really awkward position, because I feel like I want to maintain Salina's heritage and its history, and I would love to see buildings like this stand. It's brick, it's got great windows, I mean, you look back at the, the whole thing, and, but on the other hand, I just almost feel like we've arrived at this position just too late to expect the hospital to foot the bill. Yeah, I mean, ideas resting in my head. Okay, you don't save a million and a half if you tear down part of it, but maybe the project becomes more palatable to this, this new company if you're willing to, okay, it was going to cost you a million and a half, but now you only tear down a million worth, you still save $500,000. I mean, you know, I would love to see you pursue any avenue that you can, and I would do my best to, to say that I would be in support of, of housing. But that's the unfortunate thing that we tend to see, is, is the gentleman from Lee Hardbray says, "What happens is, in real estate, whenever you got a big old wood house or something, or a big old house, every real estate agent says, 'Hey, that'd make a really great bed and breakfast.'" Because they can't think of how else to save you this big old house. And it's the same thing with big old buildings, that, "Hey, let's put affordable housing inside there." Every single building seems to be the only thought we can come up with is affordable housing. How much affordable housing can we build? You know, that becomes an issue, too. I mean, he's got, I don't know how many hundred thousand, or how many, what kind of square?
180,000 square feet.
180,000 square foot there, even if we tore this down, and I think the 30,000 is manageable. You know, had this been one of the first of its projects, it would be a lot more palatable as well. We have seen some of the smaller projects work, and, and it would be nice to see something this size and in that neighborhood and see the redevelopment. I just almost feel like we're asking unfortunately, too much of you at this time, which is hard for me to say, because here I am, the guy who wants to preserve our, our older parts of town. But I just, I don't know how we can get there, and I don't know how we can ask you to spend the kind of money that I think it would cost. And you are in the hospital business, you're not in the redevelopment business. And I think we run a real risk of your financial stability when we ask you to do that. Yeah, hospitals have lots of money, but do you really? I mean, you have lots of expenses, that's what I say. So, it's easy to sit here and say, "Look at the money these guys made. How much do you write off per year? How many millions of dollars of that?" You know, and, and so, it's, it's, it's easy to sit here and say that. It's harder to make it a reality, and to ask you to be in the residential housing potential business, although I think there is a market for it. I mean, if I could say one thing to the, to the group that's looking at it, you know, with the changes in the mortgage laws, I think it's going to be a lot harder for people to buy housing. I think that the potential for more rental properties is higher. We live in a much more mobile society. Could this be a great place if it was a nice facility to attract young doctors or nurses, if they were really high-end apartments? Maybe. I don't know that answer, but I, I know that it's, it's a daunting task to ask you to try and front 700,000. I mean, even if we said mothball it, put $700,000 on the roof, most of us up here wouldn't even like you to see, to see you save that part of the building. We want to see that part of it torn down. All we want's the little center section, so why would we ask you to spend $700,000 to mothball the rest of it, when we know we really don't want to see it there either? So, it's, it's a tough choice. And, I mean, I've blabbed on, hopefully, in all that confusion that came out of my mouth, it makes some sense.
I know Larry would like to come up and say, he's been waiting very patiently.
My name's Larry Birdingham, and I just wanted to say a few things. I guess, as the longest-tenured board member currently at the hospital, maybe I'm the tallest, maybe that's why I'm, I don't know. But I do want to say a few things that may or may not clarify anything, and hopefully, I won't muddy the waters. I do appreciate your comments. My mom was born there 87 years ago, I was born there 59 years ago. So, it is an emotional decision for a lot of people, and it's not an easy decision. You know, my grandfather built some of the early buildings in Salina, built the first hospital building, as a matter of fact, and it was at St. John's Hospital. Most people don't realize that. So, these are, these are hard decisions. I've been on the board nine years, and we've talked to a lot of people over those years about the potential use. Not, not to rehash anything Jack said, because Jack has spent a lot of time on it. But I can assure you, in the last nine years, and, and I don't know that there's been a board meeting, there probably has, that's not a true statement, very few board meetings over that nine years that we've not talked about St. John's Hospital building. What can we do with it? How much is costing us? And the one thing Jack didn't say was that it may only cost us $80,000 this year, but four or five years ago, it was costing us $300,000 to $500,000 a year to maintain it. And I don't know if you added up those numbers, Jack, what it would cost, but it's, it's probably $2 to $3 million that we spent maintaining that building over the last eight or nine years. For the most part, on a low-use building, so it hasn't been, it hasn't been used a lot. I personally was involved in the renovation of the Roosevelt Lincoln Project. I personally was involved in the renovation of the Stiefel Building downtown, as were a couple of other people that are in this room today. a couple other people that are in this room today. You really can't compare this building to those two for this reason. One, the Roosevelt Lincoln Project that I worked with the developer on was a classroom building that had big rooms. It was much easier to take big rooms and make them into smaller rooms. So that worked from a cost standpoint, along with the tax credits. You had to tear out a building that had been added years after that, but structurally had not changed those two buildings. So it just hooked on to those two. Unlike this building, where you've had three or four different projects that have connected, tore off the old facade, tied into the existing building, you tear down those other pieces of it, you're going to have to put new, more expensive replications of those bricks in the facade. The Stiefel Project, we spent $4.5 million renovating that project. It was done by a volunteer contractor, somewhat controversial at times, but that project was renovated because there is a person that had a passion for that building, who did it at great reputation risk, that got a lot of things done cheaper and was able to renovate that building now almost 15 years ago. And the city did put a roof on that, but if we had waited much longer, that building would have fallen apart also. So very much like Mike said, you can put a roof on things, but at some point, you have to do something with it or start falling apart. From the St. John's Hospital standpoint, I hate it as much as anybody. I mean, I hate having to tear that building down. I can tell you the board hates to tear it down. But we also know with all the changes coming in healthcare, we are good stewards of the money of that hospital. All the board members here are not paid board members, they're volunteers, they go to meetings, they don't get paid anything. They go to those meetings to make sure that we have a very viable hospital that this community and this region can be proud of. I can tell you right now, there's not five hospitals in America that are like this one in Salina, and it's because there's been a lot of board people over the years that have made great decisions on economics that makes sense for Salina, that every one of you in this room today benefit from when you have to go to the hospital. It does not make economic sense, from our standpoint, from the board member's standpoint, for us to continue to financially support that building. As much as we hate it, and as much as we'll be criticized, and as much as somebody 10 years from now might say, why didn't you do this? It is what it is, and we're left to deal with what it is today. And the reality of it is that unfortunately today, the best thing to do is to tear it down. And we hate it, we hate it with a passion, but from a board member's standpoint, and they all could get up and talk today, we have talked and talked and talked and talked and drilled the administrative team on other uses and other things we could do with that building. But I'm sorry, unfortunately today, we just don't think there's anything else we can do but go along with the recommendation that Jack made today. So I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
About this. Let me remind the commission that you do have that ability to go into a quasi-judicial session separately if you want to discuss this amongst yourselves and your reasoning. Usually the hearing time is for certainly backgathering and making statements of this nature, but ultimately, the decision can take place in that venue, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to do that. However, something about this kind of makes me feel like kind of having the discussion out in the open is really kind of the best way to do it. I really had wished that the Heritage Commission would have had more of an open discussion because we're not able to get at what they were deliberating at and kind of where they, kind of some of that issues. But I certainly don't feel like, I know it's difficult that, you know, we have people that I know for certain are out doing the best for the community, that right now, my mind is having a hard time going with them. But I guess my position right now is just that I wish we had, since we had this last minute, well, there just might be a chance for something, that we have the opportunity to pull on that string. And so as much as we can discuss something like that in open session without jeopardizing anything, then that's kind of where I am, is what is harmed by waiting six months? And to just see if pulling on this thread produces anything. And it may not, and I trust that the questions have been asked and everything else, but I just, I guess it kind of comes back to my confidence in knowing that, I know that this probably has been talked about backwards and forwards, but hasn't been talked about in a way that just identifies that 1914 portion. And so that's kind of where I am, and I don't know where everybody else is. I'd be willing to make a motion, and if it flops, it flops, but.
I know we still, is there any other public comment on this matter? Thought there might be somebody else out there that wanted to get up and speak.
This may be the Gary Schwartz, number 528, South College. This may be the simplest of all simple suggestions. Are you all willing to put your neck out on the line to float some bonds? I don't know if it'd be 3 million, 20 million, whatever, for some tax incentive financing, because that's kind of some of y'all's focus. Are you willing to put your necks on the line to do that sort of thing and ask this question that this young man is suggesting you could do? To delay it a little. If you're not willing to do that, then you just need to go with the request that's before you. Thanks.
I think it's a good question, Gary. I think it really, really is. I think if we know in advance that we have no desire to front 3 million or 5 million or whatever the potential is, then it kind of is a moot point in itself. The one thing I would say is in this kind of housing, and nothing against Mr. Forreston and his Lee Hardware building, this seems more, I mean, if it were just this small section, it seems much more manageable, much more doable, and more in line architecturally of something that I would like to see in an area that I would feel comfortable if we were going to do any kind of housing. This would rise to the top of my list of projects that are currently in front of us. Obviously, I would want to see real numbers, but as a general feeling, yeah, I would support some form of incentive in this area of any of the projects, if there were a project, let's just put it that way. This would be something I would consider.
Real quick question for John and maybe Dean. Of the 37,024 square feet in the 1914 portion, does that include basement square footage? Or is that just the above grade?
It includes all four floors, and one of those is the ground floor, which is the basement.
Okay.
There is a basement, a quarter, a ground floor. It's very small. It's about a quarter of, there surely is, maybe over to this chair here and over the wall. It's just very small. But that would be your square footage. It's this small. First floor was the, originally, the entry floor was the second floor of that building originally in 1914, and the first floor was kind of a trace.
Is there any other public comment on this matter?
Do I have any more questions for staff? Any more comments from staff? Then I would go ahead and close the public hearing on this matter. We'll get back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone consideration of this application in order to allow the applicant to respond to a request for additional information regarding costs and feasibility of renovation of the 1914 portion of the structure only.
Second.
Is there some, Jason? Is there any other comment?
Before you vote, I'm going to turn this over to Todd. One thing, when you use postpone, you have to have a date unless you want to postpone indefinitely. Postpone indefinitely is a different action. It would kill it for you, or according to Robert's rules, that's what it would do. But if you truly want to postpone to a particular date in the future, you need to establish what that date is, that it would come back to you. With that said, though, I'm not sure that Mr. Lutman might have a thought on that extended timeline.
I think that is generally correct, is that if you do have a request for information or additional action, that you should put some kind of timeline on it, and then a determination would presumably be made if the information is or is not provided. Because you couldn't, I don't believe that you could direct them to request TIF financing or to do something extra. You could only say, please provide us with a report or something of what could be done and what date it is.
To provide the additional information from KW Real Estate and their partner, Co...
CompRise.
CompRise.
Are you, sorry, are you mending your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
For a period of 90 days.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Sorry, one second. Do we need an actual date? Is that probably a little bit more?
It would be nice, yeah, I was going to say it'd be nice to see what date it would fall on, to see if we're in between meetings or anything like that, and then, ideally, yes.
Three months out is April 14th. It's not 90 days, but that would be three months.
So bring it back, April 14th would meet the intent of that if motion maker agrees with that.
Won't have anything going on around that date or anything. Yeah.
You also might attach a structural recommendation. Can you look at that building?
The public comments were already closed, and the hearing was already closed. Has been a motion and a second? There was a motion and a second.
Is the motion maker okay with establishing the actual date to be April 14th?
April 14th, yes.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. That motion does carry 5-0. Move on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 6, 2013. Item 6.2, approve agreement with Wilson &amp; Company Incorporated Engineers and Architects for Wastewater Collection System Telemetry Improvements, Project Number 13-3009. Item 6.3, award of contract for the 2014 Crack and Joint Maintenance, Project Number 14-3017 to Circle C Paving and Construction LLC in the amount of $346,850.86. Item 6.4, Resolution Number 14-7070, amending revision to the City of Salina Personnel Manual. Item 6.5, Resolution Number 14-7069, amending the City of Salina Classified Pay Plan to Include Animal Shelter Employee Classifications. Item 6.6, consider the grant of an Ingress/Egress Easement and Utility Easement to provide vehicular access and utility services to a wireless telecommunications tower site being leased by NexTech Wireless from the City of Salina north of Kenwood Cove Aquatic Center. And Item 6.7, Resolution Number 14-7072, authorizing the mayor to sign a license agreement with Salina Regional Health Center, authorizing a private fiber optic cable to be placed in the North Oakdale Avenue and East Elm Street right of way.
That was a mouthful. Yes, it was.
Like the perfect storm meeting.
Is, are there any changes that need to be made to the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries 5-0. Go on to administration.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 14-10728, amending the Salina Code, Section 2-235, to amend the procedures in contracting for services related to public improvements. 7.1A, declare an emergency exists for second reading on the same day. 7.1B, second reading ordinance number 14-10728.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This section of your city code provides for competitive practices for public improvements of less than 10,000 and competitive bids if the project is more than 10,000. And this is sort of a setup item for the upcoming items, but what staff is recommending is the inclusion of a phrase that says, except as otherwise authorized by the governing body upon a finding that an alternative process is in the public interest. And that would give you the flexibility at any time with a future project to modify and use a different type of process. You're going to hear about the construction manager at risk process coming up, and this would obviously help with that, but it could be used at your discretion in the future. Without this change, you're locked in, and so it doesn't provide staff with discretion, it gives you that ability to deal with it with future projects. That's the only meaningful language change, there's a little bit of reorganization in just how the text is laid out. That's really it, just to give you that discretion to allow for an alternate process if you think it's in the public interest. There's no fiscal impact to the item. Based on the timing, if you're supportive of it, and how we need to utilize this for the upcoming bicentennial center project items, we are requesting that you, if you do approve it on first reading, that you declare a compelling public purpose exists. And then, once you do that, go ahead and address second reading today. And I'd be happy to ask questions.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 14-10728 on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Madam Mayor, I also moved that to declare a compelling public purpose exists for a second reading of approval of ordinance 14-10728 today.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for a second reading due to the compelling public purpose. All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, roll call.
That's a roll call. Sorry. I had a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, Madam Clerk?
You'll have another motion.
Oh, definitely.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was right, Aaron.
Hey, look at that, I was trying to be smart and ahead of the game, and I just looked like an idiot.
Sorry, made me second-guess myself.
I know, I'm good at that. So you better roll that one again.
Let's try that again. Let's start over. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, you can just call for the voting.
Well, I'll make a motion, then, Madam Mayor, that we approve on second reading. Ordinance number 14-10728.
We still need to vote on the compelling reason. I preempted it.
We have a logjam.
I thought you preempted the other thing, okay.
Let me just, we'll start it again.
I still second either your or your motion.
Sure, okay. I move that there's a compelling public purpose exists for a second reading on ordinance 14-10728.
I'll second that again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right, Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion now to approve on second reading ordinance number 14-10728.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye. That motion carries. And before we go into the three bicenter things, can we take just a real quick break? Because I know that's going to take a little bit. We'll be quick, Deion, I promise. I promise.
Just join us, maybe I might consider putting our raises back on the agenda today.
Okay, now we had our quick five-minute break. Thank you for waiting, I appreciate it. We will move along to the next agenda item, which is item point, what is it?
7.2. Item 7.2, authorize to utilize alternate procurement method for qualifications-based process to select a construction manager at risk related to upcoming renovations of the bicentennial center.
Deion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. As she just outlined for you right there, we're trying to put together our process that we'll move forward with at the bicentennial center, or that we're proposing to move forward with at the bicentennial center. We gave a lot of effort into researching different ways to go about it, the most efficient way, the most effective way for the project we have. As such, let me give you a little bit of background on the construction manager at risk that we're proposing that you guys consider here. Several things that would be a factor with this is this is somewhat new to the public side, if you will, or the public sector. It's been used in the private sector quite a bit, but from the public side, it's a little bit newer concept that has started to take hold, and you've seen it be successful in different places. What we're looking
What we're looking for is a qualifications-based process to go out and hire the construction manager. So, we want to go in and identify the best possible fit that we could for that. Some of the benefits that we see from that is getting the construction manager on early in the process makes it collaborative. So, as you've got your designer and your construction manager, they're working harmoniously as they develop the plans that would occur at the bicentennial center. It gives them both buy-in, it gives them both input in the process, it helps work through issues that maybe would be present, at the same time, early in the process where we can solve those, as opposed to them becoming issues maybe later in the process. So, that's one of the biggest components of it. Other things to consider, all the costs and fees right out in the open, it's a cost not to exceed, so we're very clear on the front side with that. It minimizes risk to the city in terms of, at the end of the project, that we have what we want, that it delivers in the end, because we have multiple parties working towards that theoretically, very collaboratively, and they both have skin in the game. I've cut through a lot of the different stuff there and tried to summarize as best that I could. We do have some folks here who, if you have some specific questions, we would be happy to have them come up and answer questions in regard to this. Ron Wrightout is the new general manager at the bicentennial center, Jason Colish, the operations manager at the bicentennial center, and then we have David Christine from Convergence Design, and then we have Dan Rubino from Global Spectrum Corporation out of Philly. So, with that, I would open it up for questions, and I, again, was pretty brief with that, but.
What kind of communication would exist between the construction manager and the designer? In terms of frequency, are they, on the, is there something going on every day, or is the, is the construction manager onsite in Salina through construction, that kind of thing?
You know, I might have David come up, if he could, and speak to it, and he can kind of explain some of the process and how it has worked for them, and give you some of that more intricate detail.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners, my name's David Greisel, I'm principal with Convergence Design, and we have an agenda item coming up in a few minutes, I hope. But to answer your question, one of the beauty parts about construction manager at risk is the fact that there is continuous communication between the construction team and the design team that goes on throughout the design process, even before construction gets started. And the thing that's great about that is the constructor knows what the design intent of the building is, knows what the owner's goals for the building are, and they're not just looking at a set of drawings that got dropped into a plan room on X date that they had to bid on, but they actually understand the goals and approach of the process, and they get to speak into that process in a way that's very constructive and helpful, because they can add tremendous value in terms of cost of the project and constructability. If we're proposing something that might be a great idea but is very hard to build, they can speak to that. And so, it really helps the process run smoother all the way through, and we're a big proponent of that.
Commissioners, to add something to, as you mentioned, there's a lot of dialogue at the beginning. Oftentimes, in a traditional design bid-build project, if you have a problem later, and we've experienced on projects before, in Kenwood Cove, we've had some, had some issues with that before, sometimes there's an argument whether or not it was a plan design issue or a specification issue, or whether it's a, excuse me, a workmanship-type issue, a material selection issue, those types of things. This eliminates that altogether, because in the end, not only do they collaborate with, until the design's finished, but we expect full agreement on the design and the final specifications and so forth, so you eliminate that altogether. And so, in that case, it's laid out, and there's really no place to point fingers back and forth. And then, the construction manager price is intended to be, and that's another, that's the general contractor's, the construction manager, keep that in mind, that's the builder. The price is intended to be a protected price without change orders, and you're able to get there because of that collaboration from the beginning. So, that's the, that's probably the biggest thing with it. You don't have a situation in which somebody says, "Well, I couldn't get it done in that time, I misread this," or "I didn't understand that," or "That wasn't good information." That, that should not happen in this process.
Quick question on this, and because this is kind of tied into a few other things, and just, just to kind of get the right players in the right position.
Sure.
And sort of timing on this thing. We got the A and E, and the, which is, I'm assuming is the conver, I'm sorry.
Convergence, potentially, yes, potentially.
Okay. And then, the construction manager at risk, which is yet to be determined?
We would go through theoretically a qualifications-based process to select the, the best candidate for that.
And then, and then are we looking at another construction manager not at risk?
A third piece there is what's, what we're calling an owner's rep. And that would be the next agenda item, so.
More of a CM?
The owner's rep would be the one who, and again, I'm gonna paraphrase here, and this is kind of loose, but keeps everybody honest, if you will, they're representing the city's interests on a daily basis. They are onsite to make sure everything is per plan, make sure everything is done to the standard specification that we want, making sure that the end product that we get is, is what we, we asked for.
Right. And then, as part of that whole process, and I'm assuming we're gonna need to get those in place pretty soon to, because to get everybody started.
Correct, correct.
Kind of at the same reasonable, kind of in the same time, or at least at, what, 35% or 65% of something, isn't it critical that we have?
Our intent would be to have, if things go as we hope, our intent would be to have the construction manager at risk on in roughly 30 days, around the 10th of February, when we would intend to bring the request to you.
Okay. And then, when we, just on this construction manager at risk, if there, if we have the price, the not-to-exceed price, maximum price, whatever they call that, if there are contingencies in there, how are those, how are those handled? I mean, because there would be, wouldn't there be owner-initiated items, change order, contingencies, whatever, and then maybe sub or contractor initiated? How are contingencies handled?
A change order, if there's a change order in this case, it should, because of the timing of the design, we wouldn't expect a change order necessarily for unforeseen things. And that, what that means is, is that, that's where the construction manager, that's where the at-risk comes into play. Where if you do see a change order, it's because we came back to you and said we need to change the scope and do something differently, and take it outside the scope. And in that case, we could build in a contingency for those types of things in the overall project. We'd really need to get closer to where we think the price will be and see if it's within budget before we decide that, but we certainly would make sense to build something in, in case there's a variation that we would request, or bring to you as a request later. But there really should be very limited circumstances in which you would need to dip into a contingency for a change order for an unforeseen situation, because in this case, you're gonna have both the designer and the builder, the contractor, looking at the building and evaluating all this at the same time. It's not to say that it couldn't happen at all, but that the process is intended to protect from that.
And does this, I take it one of the advantages of this process is, is that because we do have a small window of time when, to get this done, and it's gonna be open most of the time to, while we're working on it, does it, does it relieve some of the communication and maybe some requests for information that, that we have problems on other projects with? Is that?
And I'll let David.
Will we alleviate that?
I'll let David speak to that a little bit also, but in our research, some of the things where this process seemed to be very effective was in regard to condensed timeframes, if you will, or tighter timeframes, where you had workarounds or specific slots, and also complex projects. And this qualifies on that because you have a lot of different moving parts with different parts of the building. So, from that standpoint, yes, timing, this particular process suits our timing well because of the windows that we have and the windows that we're operating with. And I don't know if David would have anything to add to that, or?
Just, just to echo what Dionne said, construction management is a, is a great process where you have a building that's open, that needs to stay open during construction, because you really do need to integrate closely with the contractor about, you know, dates that they can perform and not perform, and, you know, when they can use jackhammers and when they can't. And those kind of conversations are much easier to conduct when you've had the builder there with you all the way through the process. And likewise, just the complexity of the project and the nature of the occupancy and public assembly and so forth, we've had really good success working with CMs.
I have to keep lowering this.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay, thank you, Dionne.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to proceed with seeking requests for qualifications for a construction manager at risk associated with the upcoming remodeling of the Salina Bicentennial Center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries.
Item 7.3, authorization to request qualifications for owner's representative to be employed as a City of Salinas agent related to upcoming renovations of the bicentennial center.
Dionne?
Thank you again. This would be the owner's rep portion of that, that we just discussed, but to give you a little bit of background, Mike helped a lot here to put some of this information together, and he may have a few things to add as well. But when you go through and look at some of the AIA language that's put together, specifically the paragraph that we have put in there, we think it's important to note, this is one of the reasons why we think the owner's rep is a nice fit here. In talking with some of the various professionals in the field, they also believe it provides a good level of protection for the city to make sure that end product is exactly what we want, that it brings both parties together, meaning you've got the design side, you've got the construction side, and you have our side, if you will. It allows all three parties to be integrated in the process, it allows all three parties to be cohesive throughout, and it gives you that conduit. As we, as we've looked at this and talked about it and talked it through, the one thing, and Mike kind of outlined it in here, is exhaustive and continuous onsite inspections. That's the one thing, if you look at some of projects that maybe have not been as successful, not just here, but anywhere, is just not having that, that boots-on-the-ground, if you will, onsite, on point, and looking out for your best interest. We really believe this, this captures that, it will, it will get what we want in the end, we think our end product will, will show for that. Part of that, too, again, size, complexity, speed with which we're trying to integrate multiple disciplines and multiple work, we think, again, that helps us, because we've got somebody who's a point person there who is just representing our interests. That's not to take away from the designer, that's not to take away certainly from the contract, the contractor, but we do believe it's a nice blend and a nice complement to the process. In terms of fiscal note, there is not a firm cost this time, based on our numbers, it's generally 2% to 3% to give you an idea. That's what we've been told through various sources, so, so keep that in mind. With that, I know I went through that again pretty fast, but I'd open it up for questions, comments?
Does this fall within the overall budget of the renovation amount?
Our intention is yes, we believe it does. We believe that, again, with the research that we had done and the different things that we looked at, we think we'll be, maybe spend a little more on the front, but have a lot more to show for it in the end.
Yeah, Commissioners, ultimately, we'll just have to see when we, when we put this together, because, because of the collaboration between the construction manager at risk and the designer, you know, they get three force the way through, they say, "Well, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to hit this budget." And we say, "Okay, what are some other alternatives that we can hit the budget?" So, we know what the budget is, we know not to exceed it, and that's another means to make sure we get there, because otherwise, if it's just a design bid-build, you gotta design, it's what it is, you gotta go through the time to bid, you get a bid, and it's what it is, and if it's high, then your only choice is to accept and try to add to the budget, or reject and start over and take more time. So, in this case, we expect to be thinking about budget, and we expect the partners to be thinking about budget the whole way through the process, and as we get closer, when those numbers become more realistic, if we need to modify in that design, we can do that so we can stay within that budget. So, I would, I would expect, based on that process, that we should be very much within budget, even with the owner's agent. And I will say, too, and typically with the designer, you look at, and there's a little bit of that built in there, you look at the, just observation visits and some of that, but with this project, as complicated and as timed as tight as this one is, to have someone there daily for us to look at every aspect, and especially things right before they're covered up, that type of thing, to see those things, you don't otherwise get the opportunity to see, makes all the difference in the world to make sure that when we're done, well, for us to deal with issues before we get too far down the line, and then when we're done, to have the project we expected to have. And I think, in hindsight, if we're gonna do Kenwood Cove again, there's no question I would, we would have this person on our staff, because I think it would have made a huge difference.
It just seems to me, I mean, it's just funny, I mean, while I see it's very important to have this in today's world, it just seems like we've hired a mommy. Like, what happened to, when people used to design stuff and build it? And do, just what they said again, now we're paying 73% to do what the other two guys should have been doing all along? You know, it's like, what a world we live in. You know, just think, we're gonna, they're gonna hire people to watch us eventually.
City stuff.
But just, but I, I agree, I mean, it's an absolutely needed thing, and your Kenwood Cove example is perfect.
Dead on, yeah.
Well, I think that, I think in a lot of, in a lot of situations, a lot of times, bigger organizations will have an inspections department that can generally do that. I like, I like doing it this way, because I think that, in this particular instance, you and your staff are a lot better doing what you do best.
For sure.
And I think the city is better protected and served by having an agent that is more
Qualified.
Qualified. To do that type, and I think we'll catch things, we'll be able to be more, I think one of the things that I think on another project that catches that could have been made, were probably let go because they were feeling like, "Well, I don't want to question the experts." And so, it kind of helps for us to have an expert that I think probably even the contractor and the, if we get the right people in place and the right communication, I think it'll make everything go smoother, so.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
One quick question, just, the 2% to 3%, is, what are, what are we looking at ballpark-wise of overall on this thing, so we know what that 2% to 3% looks like? And then also, I'm assuming that's negotiable? Okay.
Yeah.
2% to 3% is just sort of a, probably not gonna be too much more than this.
I think it's definitely negotiable, and part of that will be, again, the scope that we define for that person.
Sure.
We have to give a little bit of range there, when we bring them on, how involved do we want them in different pieces of the process? You know, are we trying to bring them on in 60 days, are we trying to bring them on in 120? But to answer your question, yes, I believe it's negotiable, and if you're looking at off of 5.75, which is roughly, you're talking about 100 to 170.
And does that kind, does that number get a little bit massaged with the, with the architect's construction administration number, too? I mean, is there, obviously, there's probably some massages?
Right, we, we had conversations with that in terms of how, how, you know, if that's not a primary function, if you will, of the architect, how does that work on the other side? And those were definitely, we moved, monies were moved around, if you will, for lack of a better term.
Sure.
I mean, placed where they, where they should be.
Right.
Thank you again, Dionne. Any public comment on this matter? I'd bring it back to the commission for a vote.
Madam Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to proceed with distributing requests for qualifications for owner's representative service associated with the upcoming remodeling of the Salina Bicentennial Center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 14-7068, authorizing the mayor to execute an architect agreement with Convergence Design LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions relating to Convergence's proposed architectural engineering design services for the Salina Bicentennial Center renovations, Project Number 13-3012.
Dionne?
Thank you again. Fourth step here, if you will, but we went through an exhaustive process via RFQ to try to, to come up with the, the best design architectural team for our project. We had a lot of discussions on the front side about how to package this, how to put it together. We utilized Dan Rubino with Global Spectrum to provide a great deal of background assistance. He's involved in numerous projects nationwide with Global, from, you know, Bangor, Maine, to one in Philadelphia, right outside of Philadelphia right now, so he's got two projects that are ongoing as well. So, we were, we relied heavy on, heavily on him to help us develop this. Additionally, we have a process within the city that we follow the RFQ guidelines that we have in place to, to go through this. As we did that, we had seven firms who submitted. We had a review panel or review team of Chris Byrd, Jason Colish, myself, Mike Skreg, and Dan Rubino. From that, from those seven firms, we interviewed each of them, and we took a, a big look at project schedules and timelines, the team that they would utilize for the project, quality would utilize for the project, quality control, their creativity, overall presentation, and then ultimately their references. And as we went through that and went through the process, Convergence came out with very, very, very high marks in all the different areas. They have a vast amount of experience in our type of projects, and when I say "our types of projects," I'm not specifically just talking about arenas, but arenas with convention centers attached, hybrids, as they call them, and we believe that was a distinction. Secondary, too, it's not a brand-new arena from the ground up. It's a renovation. They have extensive experience with the renovations. As we went through this process, and the more we spoke to folks, and when I say "folks," some of the people that they've worked for on our reference checks, we really came away impressed. As we move forward, we would anticipate that the initial construction documents would be completed by April 14th of 2014, and we would actually begin construction June 9th. As you can see, that's a very aggressive timetable, something that we have obviously been in consultation with the design team on and worked with them. Throughout the process, we all came back to Convergence. I mean, and that's what it came down to. So as we move forward here today, we brought them here. Certainly, Dave will probably want to say a few words, but we are recommending Convergence for the project. We believe that they check the boxes that we want to check. We believe that they have the experience that we're looking for. We believe that they will do a great job for us based on the process that we went through. With that, I would open it up for questions.
Do we have any questions for staff? Thank you, Dionne. Any public comment on this matter?
Well, hello again. Again, my name is David Greisel with Convergence Design, and with me this evening is Kristi Oss Meyer, who would be our project manager on this project. Kristi and I are both graduates of K-State from several years ago, shall we say, and...
The magic word there.
Trying to shoe his way in.
I'd like to make a motion right now.
He'll have to ask forgiveness for me.
Well, I know we...
Those two just canceled each other out.
Dionne's a big K-State fan, but he liked us anyway. Just to, I don't want to stand here and give you a commercial about our firm, but just to say, I have 35 years' experience in this profession, of which more than 30 has been working on public assembly projects. My first project of this type was a little arena for a college in South Dakota that started in 1983, so that's a little over 30 years ago. And since that time, have worked on a wide variety of projects of all sizes and shapes, but more recently, we find ourselves working on a lot of arena renovation projects all over the country. We've been doing studies for communities like Sioux City, Iowa, and Bossier City, Louisiana, and Dawson Creek, British Columbia.
That's not a real name.
That's a real name. It's a real place. And so we seem to be doing a lot of these kinds of projects, and certainly, this is a very high-priority project for us. We're not a huge firm, and this project is going to be our top priority for the next few months. So we're very excited to be working on it, and very pleased and honored to have the trust of the selection committee and hopefully of this commission as well.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Just to add, Commissioners, one thing we looked at was not just to be able to address the functional aspects, but our facility, it works, you know, it can be made to work better, but it's really drab based on the time it was constructed and all that. And the experience they showed, they can, they know how to put a little pizzazz into the aesthetic, and so that's one of the expectations we have, not to put too much pressure on them, but when you get the opportunity, give us a little pizzazz. We need to freshen it, modernize it, as well as make it work functionally. They can do that.
Does it matter that the companies within easy driving distance?
Were you asking for a discount, or something?
No, I'm just saying that it doesn't matter. It'd make a difference one way or the other. If we were in New Hampshire, would that make any difference to the firm in terms of how it works with us?
Well, let me just say that the vast majority of our work is for out-of-town clients. The only real distinction is whether we're getting on an airplane or a car to get to service those clients, and the only real difference there, when you get right down to it, is the cost of our reimbursable expenses is lower if we're in a car than an airplane. But other than that, we feel like, because this is our standard mode of operation, serving out-of-town clients, it's, we believe that we provide the same high level of service to all our clients, and it's just a matter of being a little bit more intentional about scheduling meetings and making sure that we're making the most use of our time here on the ground in Salina versus, you know, just being able to drive down the street. But it's our standard MO, and this project will benefit from us not having to buy plane tickets, but other than that, we think we'll provide a high level of service.
It might make a difference, I would guess, if something unexpected came up, that, you know, you wanted to be there the next day or something of that sort.
Well, to that point, I think that that's an argument for item 7.3, which was the owner's representative, which is that person who will be able to provide that sort of instantaneous on-call response if there's something. But again, we're used to working at a distance, and we're used to answering contractor questions from the field at a distance, and, you know, with all the technology tools that are available now, that's much less difficult than it used to be.
A quick question, Dionne. On the additional consultants and project team, how is that going to work out? Is Convergence sort of the team leader, and then the structural, mechanical, electrical, all those coming under?
Correct.
Okay, and so, as far as the structural engineer goes on this, is this the structural engineer that we've been working with already on the rigging and...
The rigging is not a part of this project. It will be standalone, which we'll bring to you at a later date. So from a structural engineer standpoint, I don't want to speak for David, Geiger, who we're using for the rigging, that is separate from this.
Okay, so those are separate. That's not involved with this coordination between those two? Is there going to be overlap with those two projects?
I think there's a possibility for some, but when you look at the majority of the work that we're seeing, when you're talking about locker rooms, concourses, concession stands, kitchens, none of those are in the arena, whereas the rigging work is in the arena itself, so...
And to maybe step back a half a step, is our construction manager able to work with us on that project as well at the same time? Is that going to be possible, or...
Yeah, that would be the expectation. I think we could see some paths being crossed is that when we look at the HVAC in the arena and the just overall ventilation system, those are arena-type projects, where you could see some of that, and there will have to be coordination there. But that's anticipated, and that's where we can use, quite honestly, to our benefit, we can use the owner's representative to help us with that coordination.
And as David spoke to me earlier on that, he talked about, you know, if you've got a little bit of disagreement between party A and party B, meaning maybe the designer and the general contractor, or not to use that term, but the CMAR between those two, that the owner's rep kind of acts as the party that goes in there and says, "You know what? I hear your side, and I hear your side. This is what I think," and obviously, talks with us, but then kind of is the one who helps drive that in terms of the process.
Okay. Do we anticipate this CMAR process with the rigging contract or not?
No, that design is final, and it's just a matter of getting them in and having them do their work. That's pretty much a straight...
Oh, that contract, okay, we've got that contract.
Thanks, Dionne.
Thank you.
I bring it back to the Commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 14-7068, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Convergence. In the, do I need to probably include the amount with, as you think necessary?
Wouldn't be necessary if you wanted to just approve the contract as proposed.
Okay, contract as proposed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, guys. We look forward to working with you. And welcome to Salina.
And all our meetings are...
And waiting so patiently.
This is actually a short meeting for us, so we tried to speed things up for you guys to get you in. Poor Quick Shop guys back here about to hang themselves.
I know, I know.
Next time, bring concessions.
Yeah, Quick Shop guy, aren't you supposed to have food and stuff and pot and candy?
Next time, you know, to bring food.
Item 7.5, First Reading Ordinance Number 14-10727, amending Chapter 8, Article 1 of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2013 Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities. 7.5A, declare an emergency exists for second reading on the same day. 7.5B, Second Reading Ordinance Number 14-10727.
I don't see Mr. Getty anywhere. Somebody...
No, Mayor, I was going to mention that they...
Is that going to be you today?
This opportunity, this, yeah, this opportunity fell to me. The, I think, in anticipation of the municipal court schedule, Mr. Getty had asked that Jake Peterson, who helped with the amendment that we'll talk about here just quickly, and as it turned out, Jake is in a trial, and we were unsure when he would be available, so it fell to me. This is our annual process. There's two components of this, as you might be aware, but we're first looking to the standard traffic ordinance that's developed by the Kansas League of Municipalities that carries over for us in a codified form, any, the state laws relating to traffic. And as those are changed, then they update the standard traffic ordinance. And as the changes, as are outlined in your blue sheet, really fall into three categories. The first of all had to do with the ability to provide electronic proof of insurance now. The second group of changes has to do with what constitute prior offenses when making a determination of what is the second offense for DUI purposes. And then the third category of changes have to do with the lighting of motorcycles. And we can go into more detail, but those are the three areas that the legislature dealt with in, and are shown now in this new version of the standard traffic ordinance. The other component is that, as you might recall from when we dealt with earlier, the, in conjunction with the Property Maintenance Code, the prohibitions against parking in yards and such, we were, again, dealing with local amendments to the standard traffic ordinance. We have an additional one to propose to you, and it is really more of a clarification, and that has to do with the monitoring of parking, the community service technicians as they monitor parking time limits and such. Also, as you might imagine, there are parking infractions, other than just overtime parking, that it would seem appropriate for them to handle, rather than a police officer having to become involved. This clarifies their ability to deal with those, and that's what prompts this proposed amendment to Section 4, which, not knowing exactly what, if there might be changes or further opportunities to delegate those responsibilities, they've been identified as the community service technicians, parking officers, or other similar officials designated by the city manager, and that describes what they are empowered to do in carrying out enforcement relative to parking. So you have the update, as well as a new proposed local amendment, making that clarification. And as Ms. Wicks indicated, we would suggest, if you would, to make a determination that we should go ahead and get this put in place and have both readings today.
Do I have any questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter?
We're wearing them out.
Bring it back to the Commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 14-10727 on the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries, 5-0.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I move to declare a compelling public purpose exists to have a second reading of ordinance number 14-10727.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 14-10727.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to development business.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 14-7071, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with the owner of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Quick Shop addition for the cooperative placement and maintenance of landscaping in the Centennial Road and Crawford Street right-of-way, and the placement and ongoing maintenance of a stormwater detention area in the Centennial Road right-of-way to facilitate the construction of a new Quick Shop convenience store.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm back for one more item, and this is a, just, I think you're familiar with the project, but back in 2011, the City Commission agreed to vacate what was deemed some excess right-of-way along Centennial Road. That allowed Quick Shop to create an expanded parcel for an expanded convenience store. The plan was for a new 5,549 square feet Quick Shop convenience store where this building is presently located. And on July 8th of 2013, you approved a zoning change, and as part of that zoning change, there were two conditions that we are addressing today. One condition was that runoff calculations for the post-development runoff being directed to the Centennial Road ditch over here be reviewed and approved by the city engineer to ensure that the ditch has capacity to accommodate the additional runoff that is to occur prior to issuance of a building permit. The other thing that needs to occur prior to issuance of a building permit is to have a right-of-way maintenance agreement for landscaping that's going to occur on the Centennial Road and a little bit on the Crawford right-of-way. So you approved the zoning change and site plan with those conditions. There was also a plat that merged all of this property into one development site. I think, John, you've got the map that shows how the properties pieced together, the site survey and plat of existing conditions. So this is what it looked like before. This was Quick Shop property. This was city-owned property. This is the area where we have the 13 junipers that were planted by the forestry department. This has all been merged into one lot. You could go to the plat of existing conditions. So this was the original store in Canopy. This is the area added. This is the place where we have the existing plantings that were done by city forestry. So we now have building plans and a building permit application pending to construct this new store at this location. The existing 2,600-square-foot store here has been removed from the site. We have a license agreement application filed by Quick Shop to fulfill one of the conditions of approval, and what we are explaining here is that they are fulfilling their front-yard landscaping obligation by putting those plantings on public right-of-way between their property line and the roadway for Centennial Road, and they're also utilizing this area for detention. And you can see the inlet and pipe that would carry the runoff underneath the ditch. John, if you could go to that aerial photo, I'll just quickly explain the drainage. I think that's slide, this collection PDF, but this is a Quick Shop site. The runoff from here would actually go down this side of Centennial Road and would cross over and eventually get to this point, cross over, and then go through the levee and over to the West Dry Creek Channel, but they will detain it in that area, and then that area will be pumped dry within 24 hours by a stormwater pond pump. And so one of the questions staff had was, we want to ensure that the plantings proposed in this area would be water-tolerant and compatible with its dual use. And you have in your packets there a letter from Isaac Crumey with PEC explaining how that would work, and it is a dry detention area. It's going to be dry the vast majority of the time, and it will be pumped dry within 24 hours, so you're not going to see standing water there, or wetlands, or cattails, or things like that. It's going to be a dry detention area, and this is, I believe, the 13 junipers that were there planted by the city, and they would be relocated and incorporated into this plan. So if we take Area A, B, C, and D, the areas that are subject to this agreement as A and B, and they're proposing a total of 20 tree units on the site, and nine are in here and three along Crawford in the right-of-way. And so what this is designed to do is to ensure that there's a mechanism in place that Quick Shop will be responsible for installing the landscaping, maintaining it, replacing it if necessary, and also keeping the detention area and pump in operating condition. And again, the reason for the agreement is that in most of our development, this would occur on private property, and occur on private property, and you wouldn't need a separate agreement. But in this case, the detention and some of the landscape planting is going to occur within the publicly-owned right-of-way. So Quick Shop will be responsible for initial planting, ongoing maintenance, replacement costs if there's a need to replace. They'll be responsible for the initial construction, ongoing maintenance with the storm detention basin and pump. This approach has been used most recently at Ohio and Crawford at the CVS redevelopment, also at Ninth and Magnolia, where some right-of-way was beautified in front of what was Green Lantern and is now Casey's. And we think beautifying the right-of-way in this fashion and having an agreement to that effect is consistent with our goal of beautifying our entry areas. John, if you could go back to one of, either the plat of existing conditions or that site Wanted to point out that this area up here, where there is some existing landscaping, that will remain in place, and that area still be available for, whether it's an entryway sign or things, we still have plenty of right-of-way here outside the bounds of that that's under the city's control. And so it's this area here where the 13 junipers are in the way, and those will be incorporated, and this landscape area will remain unchanged. John, you do have a couple photographs, don't we, just to... So this will remain unchanged. These 13 junipers are in the way. They'll be relocated and incorporated into part of the perimeter plan. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have. We have Charlie Brown here representing PEC of Wichita, and Todd Mills representing Quick Shop. We tried to clarify that Quick Shop is actually a ground lease holder here, so Ann Henry is the actual underlying owner of the property, and the agreement will be with her, and also Quick Shop will be a party to the agreement.
Dean, is there any, from when we approved kind of the use of this right-of-way for part of the calculations and so on, this was kind of a condition...
Right.
Of that, has any, has anything changed?
The only thing that has changed is that we have, we did not at the time have the calculations that confirmed the runoff and what area it would occupy. The other thing is that the plan that you had in front of you had slightly fewer tree units, and under staff's review, the number of tree plantings has increased from the earlier plan. But other than that, this is fundamentally the same plan with the right in, right out. The entrances are all in the same place. The only thing we've done is slightly beef up the number of plantings and spelled out the area that's going to be used for storm detention. We did not know at the time that there would be a pump involved, and now we do.
Okay. But the, the storm detention was going to be in there, and part of that, it's just the size of...
Right. We just didn't know at the time. We wanted to confirm that it wasn't going to overwhelm that area that it would in fact fit.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for staff? Would the guys from Quick Shop like to come up and say something?
Thank you.
For long things.
You guys remember how long it took about the sign when you came up last time, so you were, you need to be prepared mentally next time for a long wait.
I hope you can ever be prepared mentally for these meetings.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and Commissioners, I am Charlie Brown with PEC, Professional Engineering Consultants in Wichita. We are consultants to and agents for the Dillon's Company, which owns the Quick Shop brand convenience stores. Sorry, we didn't bring pizza, but what we do have is a two-hour PowerPoint presentation. I'd like to add to the enjoyment this evening. Very briefly, we are in agreement with Mr. Andrews' staff report and the contents of the agreement that's been presented. So if you have any questions of myself or Todd Mills, who is here with Quick Shop, we'll be glad to try to answer those.
Do we have any questions?
What is your schedule for construction?
As soon as you sign that document, we'll get going.
It looks like there's a lot of activity over there already.
No, what we have already done, we went ahead and took a gamble, and we already had first-round comments kind of come through, so we went ahead and decided to go ahead and demo and apply for a demo permit within the... But with this document in place, we'll hopefully get going either next week or the week of the 27th, depending on how fast the permit comes back through, to be completed by mid-April, early, and then open early May.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I think that's going to really improve that corner. Thank you, guys.
It is.
I just have a quick question on this, on the stormwater pump. Is that something that we normally, do we normally utilize that technique, or is that something new?
It all depends on whether gravity is available. In the case of Olive Garden, because of the depth of the pond there in relation to where the water has to go, the only way for the water to get out of the pond is to be pumped. We actually have a few residential subdivisions that have stormwater detention basins with pumps, and it's just a matter of the elevation difference between the outflow and where the water has to go. In this case, the depth was needed to store the water, so the only way to get it out and through the pipe to the south is to pump it.
Okay. So if that pump fails, are we, what are we going to be, what's the result of that?
Pump fails means the, the pumps are usually equipped with a flashing light on the top, and when it's not working, and it starts flashing, and that alerts the store manager, whoever, that it's not functioning, and then it would be the responsibility of the store manager to have the number for whoever needs to come out there and get that operating.
Bucket Brigade?
Based on my recollections of the elevations, it'll overflow into their paved parking area at the gas station.
Okay, but it won't like out onto Crawford or...
It depends on the storm event, but...
It's more likely to back up and go to the east into their pumping area in their building, so they will, they will be motivated to get it pumping.
And I do want to keep in mind, too, that that inlet is still there at that location as well, so it will be pumping, or it will be gravity feeding water on the other side. It's just that we couldn't get enough out fast enough.
Okay.
Thank you. Any public comment? You guys are here, it's just my technicality. I'd bring it back to the commission for a vote.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 14-7071, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with current, the current record owners of Lot 1, Block 1 of the Quick Shop addition to allow for cooperative placement and maintenance of landscaping and a stormwater detention basin in the Centennial Road and Crawford Street right-of-way. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Do we have any other business?
I would move that we postpone...
Yes, Madam Mayor.
The executive session until...
You can vote against it. Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matter, and reconvene at 9:25.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, we, for the, for the public interest, we do not expect action.
Not me.